Good afternoon. Today is July 29th, 2020. It is 3:02 PM and we will get underway with the Pooter School District Board of Education Special Meeting. The, we only have one action item today. That's to go over the, to make some changes to the calendar. The rest of the meeting is dedicated purely to information on the reopening. So, um, board, before we do anything else, we would, uh, we'll go into community comments. And we have six members of the community signed up for, uh, that community comment. And just so everybody knows, what we'd like everyone to do is stay muted until I call your name. At which point we'd like you to unmute and, um, Lauren or Dan will bring you into the meeting at that point. And you'll have, um, given with six people, I think we can go ahead and we'll go with the three minutes. If you have up to three minutes of comments, we'll allow for three minutes, uh, in this meeting. So, I don't think if I forgot any other instructions, please, uh, no usage of any minors, no insults, no derogatory terms. Uh, we'll, we'll hold the privilege of muting people if we feel like there's anything of that ilk. So there, there are a lot of passions going on. We're, we're very aware of it and we'd really like to hear everybody's comments and, uh, maintain some decorum at the same time. So with that said, uh, Matt Rogers, Mr. Matt Rogers, if you're there, you will be the first person up to speak. Please unmute and welcome to our meeting.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can indeed.
Okay, great. Uh, so again, thanks for the opportunity. Uh, this is a, a, a big challenge for you guys. I know nothing you, you say or do is going to be very, uh, uh, happy for everyone. Um, I just want to talk a little bit about phase three, um, and some of the options. Uh, looking at, uh, if you're say a middle school student, uh, in group A, uh, their schedule, uh, for the half day setup that we have right now, uh, it's a half, Monday is half day in class and half online. Uh, Tuesday is all remote learning. Wednesday is another half day of remote learning. Thursday is a remote day learning and Friday is a remote day learning. So if you look at, uh, the way that phase three is going to be implemented, it's five days of remote learning, uh, with some classroom interactions on Monday and Wednesday. Uh, and there's some challenges there for parents. Uh, that's five days of childcare and remote instruction that they have to do. Um, and the schedule is very fixed in terms of when they have to be in school and when they're not in school. Um, for teachers, it's kind of a double workload. They have to do, uh, remote learning and in-class learning. Um, they're also exposed to all of their students, so there's a higher risk for, uh, the virus. Um, and then students are getting a huge range of experience in their classrooms. It's, it's, it's a three hours a day, uh, mostly talking about, uh, uh, cleaning procedures and whatnot. And they go back and forth between, uh, remote and online very quickly. Uh, if five days remote is really kind of what we're looking at, um, we already have that with phase two. Um, five days, that's five days of remote learning, uh, but you can do in-class stuff. For parents, uh, they get a much more consistent schedule. If they want more, uh, in-class learning, if they're, feel like their, their students are doing well enough, they can work with teachers to actually get some of that limited in-class, uh, uh, instruction. Uh, for parents that don't want the exposure, um, they can stay home. Uh, the real benefit of this is that teachers, uh, they can focus on, uh, good online remote learning. That's what their, their main thing is going to be. And then they can leverage their experience working with parents on their own schedule at their own time to do in, uh, you know, in-person learning as needed under phase two. Um, phase three is, it seems the way it's going to be implemented, it's really just kind of phase two with more hoops and less flexibility for, uh, for the parents. Um, I think we all want to be in phase four when we can get there, when it's safe to get there. I think everyone wants to be there. Right now, I think phase two might be a solution to look at. It gives teachers and parents the flexibility to kind of work out their own schedules. It makes, uh, an easier workload for teachers. Um, and I would urge, uh, to consider replacing the very complex system we have right now with, uh, a phase two opening, uh, until say September and then renew that on a monthly basis to give parents a little bit more chance to kind of see what's coming up. Um, and then go to phase four when it really is safe to do so. Um, thanks for your time. I know it's hard. Um, you have some real opportunities with your teachers and parents to leverage their work. Um, and I know you guys will make the right choice. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Kristoff, you were muted. Can you say all of that again?
All right. It's been a while. Sorry. Okay. Next up is Ms. Wendy Dixon. Ms. Dixon, if you'd like to unmute, we will welcome you to the meeting.
Kristoff, I'm not seeing Wendy on this list at the moment.
So what we'll do, I'll, uh, hold the spot. We'll bring her back in at the, we'll try again towards the end here, see what happens. Okay. So that would bring us to Mr. Greg Thornton. Mr. Thornton, if you're there, please unmute and welcome to the meeting. I think I saw Mr. Thornton earlier. He's there, right, Lauren?
He is there. He needs to make sure that the, the microphone icon at the top of his screen is green by clicking on it in order to be able to...
Mr. Thornton, you apparently are still muted. If you can try to unmute.
Oh, there we go.
There I am. Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Sorry. Couldn't find the button before. Thank you. They, they, uh, "Thank you for your decision to open schools for the children, for our children's sake in these difficult times. Please continue to listen to science instead of fear and politics." "Many prestigious medical organizations, including AAP, have advocated for schools for full-time in-person instruction." "For example, professors at Harvard School of Public Health say 'we should be following the science that say, says in-person schooling for our kids is too valuable to give up and that the risk of school-based transmission appears to be low.'" "If I had more time, I could give a lot more scientific data advocating for full-time in-person instruction." "Also, the good news is Laramore County is not Florida. Our cases are quite low. Five out of the six Laramore County indicators are flashing green right now and hopefully things will get better over time." "Schools are an essential service, like grocery stores, and are more important than marijuana dispensaries, tattoo parlors, beauty salons, et cetera, all of which have been open for months." "Our nurses, firemen, grocery workers, and many others are all counting on schools to educate their children while doing their critical work. These essential workers cannot be expected to homeschool their children with only part-time options while trying to do their full-time jobs." "I represent family and many friends when I ask you to consider the following two improvements to your initial reopening plan. First, only half-days twice a week for two days is way too slow of a ramp. Half-days are a nightmare for working parents to figure out logistics for." "Instead, please revise your plan that once schools open, they ramp up to full-time in only a few days instead of weeks, just like other local school districts are safely doing." "Second, please allow middle and high school kids to return to full-time instead of just part-time." "Again, I applaud your decision to allow elementary kids to return full-time. Please also give the same option to high schoolers, many of whom really struggle with part-time school and instead need full-time in-person instruction." "In summary, the scientific data clearly shows the danger from the virus is far less than the damage being done to our kids and to our community's essential workers by not allowing a return to full-time in-person instruction. Please quickly open middle and high schools for full-time in-person instruction and please keep them open all semesters since they are a very critical and essential service for our community. Thank you."
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Thornton. And next up on the list, we have Mr. Tyler Davis. Mr. Davis, if you would like to unmute and join us, we'll welcome you to the meeting. Mute button is to the top left and looks like a microphone.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
And it's actually Mrs. Tyler Davis, but most people get that wrong.
This is Tyler Davis. Thank you very much for correcting me.
No problem. So I do have a prepared statement. Um, "I am a mother of two PSD students, a nine-year-old son going into fourth grade and a 14-year-old daughter starting her freshman year of high school. I'm also a nurse practitioner in the hospital and I've seen the toll that this virus has taken on people, including a surprising number of young adults. I want to thank you for all of your hard work in trying to find a viable solution for reopening schools. When I first received the email with reopening plans this week, I was initially pleasantly surprised with the plan to open in a hybrid manner with only half-days in school, which would afford students the opportunity to meet their teachers and classmates in persons prior to transitioning to online learning. I then became very concerned when I got to week three and saw the elementary students would go back full-time. I have multiple concerns about the reopening of schools, but my primary concern is the health and safety of our children, teachers, staff, families, and the community in general. We have limited data regarding the effects of COVID on school-aged children. Countries who have successfully reopened schools have done so with dropping case numbers and a robust testing system. We have neither of these. Colorado's numbers continue to climb and our current testing system takes seven to 10 days for results, rendering it essentially useless. The current mortality rate for children in Colorado aged 10 to 19 is .17%. And while this is not a large percent, I don't think anyone wants to see their child become a statistic. There is also an increase in instances of multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. This syndrome affects multiple organ systems and we do not yet know what the lifelong health implications will be for children who are affected by this. Our children should not be used as some sort of science experiment to validate whether or not these current statistics are accurate. Also, in the instance of a positive case, the 30-page document included in the email simply states that the school district will follow the recommendations of the health department. My question is, what are these current recommendations? And I feel that this information needs to be clearly outlined for families so that we can make informed decisions on whether or not this plan is acceptable to our families. As a concerned mother and healthcare provider, I strongly urge you to please reconsider your plans for reopening schools and follow in the footsteps of Denver Public Schools, who just today announced all students will start in 100% virtual setting. The loss of even one student or teacher is too high of a price to pay to reopen schools. And I thank you for your time."
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Davis. And next on the list, and I believe this time I'll get it correct, is Mr. Kevin Anderson. Uh, Mr. Anderson, if you'd like to unmute your microphone, we'll welcome you to the meeting.
Thank you very much and I appreciate you guys being here. I know it's an odd time of day for you guys as well. Um, there are a lot of people here today, so I'll keep this fairly brief. Uh, my name's Kevin. I have a daughter at Linton Elementary. Uh, my biggest issue with the district reopening plan is the short timetable for parents trying to make the decision between in-person and PSD virtual. We parents are being asked to make that decision by August 8th, even though it's a very fluid situation that many of us are tracking day by day. Also, once that choice has been made in either direction, parents are kind of stuck with it. Per the district FAQ, it'll be difficult or impossible to transition into the other option later in the year, even if the COVID situation changes greatly in the next nine months. Parents that choose the in-person will have to commit to keeping their kid in-person, even if they're not comfortable with future school board decisions on phase changes, changes possibly months down the road. That's a lot of trust to ask of us as parents without more information. I understand the logistical problems of planning for both in-person and PSD virtual, but let's not pretend that the four-phase reopening plan doesn't have its own logistical problems associated with it. And let's also not forget our surroundings right now. We're currently in the middle of a remote Board of Education meeting because holding it in-person wouldn't be safe right now and wouldn't be in line with state and county guidelines. We can't safely do an in-person Board of Education meeting right now, but we're going to open up our schools to almost 30 kids within three to six weeks and it's going to be safe. I, I have some trouble personally believing that. Um, many districts right now are revising their opening plans as we speak. Um, and there's no prize for being the first district to reopen. Um, I would urge you to let some of the other, other districts out there, you know, be the canary in the mine or the guinea pig in this situation and reassess our situation three or four weeks after they open. Thank you very much for giving me the time to speak today and, uh, that's all I have to say on the matter.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And next on the list is Mr. James Bailey. Mr. Bailey, if you would unmute, we'll welcome you to the meeting.
Hi, how are you doing today?
Doing well. Welcome.
Uh, just wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, oh, sure. Uh, some of my concerns, I'm a, I've been a mortgage officer, loan officer for like 30 years. So like I have a lot of anecdotal evidence in terms of, uh, budgeting with people and, and what, what really goes into how people pay their bills and, you know, basically I would say like 80% of the people I qualify for mortgages nowadays are two-working, you know, parents or a single working parent. Uh, my concern is the disparate effect this is going to have on lower-income households as well as, uh, you know, whether that's a two-person household working full-time or if that's a single-person household working full-time. Uh, the, the amount of time that they're going to have to actually do this work online with their children is much reduced compared to somebody where there may only be one person that has to work and one person that can concentrate on the children. So I, I would like to kind of hear, you know, a little bit of what has gone into, you know, thinking about how we're going to offset some of that, uh, as well as, uh, what someone else had, uh, discussed earlier about, you know, really showing your work. I mean, everybody's saying, "We'll do it when it's safe," but nobody tells us what's going into that decision. So those are, are two of my concerns that I would like addressed.
Okay. Mr. Bailey, that was in your comments. Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. And I'd like to go back and see if we have Ms. Wendy Dixon online. Lauren, is she there?
Hey, still do not see Wendy Dixon online.
Very good. Uh, as far as I'm aware, that is everybody who signed up for community comments. So thank you for all those. Uh, I know some of the staff representing it probably heard some of those and we may get, we'll try to get some of the answers to the questions that were put out. So, um, so, and that brings us straight up to the informational part of this meeting. And, uh, Dr. Smizer, I will turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you. And thanks to the community members who have spoken up. We really appreciate it. Um, I, I would like to echo some of their comments, just of the, um, the inability to be able to accurately describe exactly what every week will look like without knowing what's on our horizon. So our plan was intentionally, um, saving decision-making until we're in the moment so that we can respond to actually what's happening in our community. So, um, with that brief intro, I'd like to turn it over to Todd Lambert, who is the Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Elementary, and he's going to lead out this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smizer. Good afternoon, everyone. We're getting ready to, uh, put up a few slides that are going to help us with this presentation. I want to let you know that our goal for tonight is to provide you with an update on our opening. I'm going to go ahead and go first and describe our elementary schedule and a little bit about what we'll be doing for those first four weeks. Then I'm going to turn it over to my partner, Scott, and he'll explain the middle school and high school schedules for you. We're just going to do it in that order. Our goal is that you'll be informed. I know you've got the information when we release that on Monday, but tonight could be a nice opportunity for us to clarify any questions that you may have. We also have, um, Matt Bryant here and others. If there are questions that go that way, though I expect our focus tonight to be more about the open. So if we can begin, uh, we can go to the second slide here. As you know, our original starting date for school this year was Monday, August 17th. We have made the decision that we need some practice time for our new normal or our moving target normal, and we are not going to hold school for students the week of August 17th through the 21st. That's going to be an opportunity for our teachers to come in and practice in their areas for their own safety as well as for the safety of students. There are a lot of logistical maneuvers that have to take place regarding placement of desks, how kids move in time and space in the building. And as you can imagine, again, back to a little bit of a new normal of how we're going to operate throughout the day. Uh, so we will have no school during that week. All staff will report to their schools and principals will have preparation plans. I know our grade levels at elementary are really eager to get together to begin designing lessons in anticipation of potentially working in between in-person and remote learning at some point. And we want them to have those additional five days to prepare. And that's going to be the same all the way across the board. You can see on there, that'll be the same for middle school and high school. Early childhood will carry out the same kind of work. However, they are going to have some visits. One of the great features of our early childhood department, and Carolyn leads this work with her team, they reach out to students much like we do in many of our schools with our kindergarten students and begin to establish relationships with families. We don't want to wait until the week of the 24th to do that. We want to go ahead and get our early childhood folks involved. They'll do that virtually. Okay? And Lauren, let's go to the next slide if we can. I will use this slide to explain weeks two and three for elementary because they're identical. Um, and so we'll start with early childhood and you can see at early childhood and in elementary, we have divided our students into A groups and B groups. In fact, we've done that all the way across the board, early childhood through 12th grade. We created essentially a line in the middle of the alphabet, found out what, if it was K or L would be the best place to divide. We did that and because we need to make sure we get our rosters evened up a little bit. As you can imagine, at the end of last year, we put a lot of effort into class lists and that all kind of got blown out the window and we had to move them into A, B groups. That's been done. Families can find that information through Parent View on Synergy. Early childhood's no exception. They have divided into A and B groups and you can work across there. They will attend in half, uh, half-days. Um, in-person time, they're going to have, do much the work what we'll do in elementary. They'll start the day on a regular schedule. They will have transportation provided if they're eligible for that. And they'll work all the way through the week. A group Monday and Wednesday morning, B group Tuesday and Thursday morning. And on Friday, early childhood teachers, as always, use Friday for their collaboration day. I know many of you are aware, early childhood goes to school Monday through Thursday. They utilize Fridays for planning, for staff development. So that schedule and the rhythm of that schedule is familiar to them. They'll maintain that same schedule. At the elementary level, kindergarten through fifth grade, we'll mirror that. We'll put our students into A, B groups. Uh, I'd like to say that they're perfectly put in half, but they're not. Uh, they're close. We have some situations where a student may have been in an A group, uh, but because of some situations with transportation or an older sibling, we want to make sure that our families all attend school in the same group. It's tough on our families if they have students in an A group and a B group. So we made sure that they were separated. We worked through that. I want to commend Sarah Seifel and her team in the IT department for making that work. Elementary will go in the A group, B group as well. They'll start those first two weeks in half-days. The reason for the half-days are, there are actually several reasons. One of them is we want to ease in. We are really putting, uh, everyone in the school community into a different situation and we want to make sure that we have a manageable group. We also need to make sure that our groups are small enough, uh, that we can follow our county guidelines for safety. We believe that the half-day is a great opportunity for that. We know our students are going to face issues regarding face coverings. We're also doing this in Colorado in the middle of August. It's going to be hot and there's a lot of circumstances there. And we just feel like the half-day model is a nice way to ease into that for our practice. We will do that A group Monday, Wednesday, B group on Tuesday and Thursday. On Fridays, just like early childhood, the elementary teachers will spend that time collaborating. As I said earlier, elementary teachers need to get together and, and plan for their lessons. We're going to, in anticipation of some remote learning possibly, as well as just trying to figure out what they're doing on a day-to-day basis as far as this new arrangement. We're going to do this schedule at elementary for two weeks. We had contemplated, uh, each week kind of gradually stepping in with a little more time in person. We talked through that and based on what we're, we're looking at right now, we really feel like a two-week model for that, for students to be in school for two of those days, half-day, and the rest of the time at home is the safest approach to start the year. And then we go to our fourth week at elementary school and that'll be the week of Labor Day. As you know, Labor Day is Monday, September 7th. We have no school on that day. We will begin on Tuesday, September 8th with all of our elementary students in session. I want to preface that by saying that's our plan right now. As you know, the situation is fluid and I think we feel confident speaking to our community in terms of three to four-week blocks. Out beyond that, our confidence level goes down a little bit as, uh, you see things rapidly change around you as well. We feel fairly comfortable right now that we can speak in that three to four-week block and we are in this position. Again, our hope is that, uh, our plan is that on that fourth week, on that Tuesday, we'll bring all students into, into session. And of course, as Scott will say as well, and as all of us will say, if circumstances change, if conditions change, that warrant a change on our end for schedules, we'll be, we'll be flexible enough to do that. Um, and I will, uh, if you have questions about elementary, maybe the best way to do that right now is to answer those and then turn it over to Scott. So if we can separate those, I would be willing and, uh, ready to take questions that you may have about the schedule or anything else about how our elementary students are going to do their work those first four weeks.
Okay. I see, I do see hands up. DJ will go with you and then Rob after that.
I just wanted to, kind of a clarifying point, when you're talking about the, uh, early childhood, there's, there's really four groups because there's also, there's A and B, but then there's half-day and full-day in there also. And there was, so I, one of the emails we got was confused about that aspect of it. And I just want to, if you could clarify how those were, their days are kind of different about the half-day ones?
Yeah. They've got a little bit of a challenge, DJ. You hit it right. They have, uh, we have early childhood students who participate in a half-day and we also have those that are in our Head Start model that go for a full day. In that, that, those first, uh, weeks where it says half-day, regardless of whether or not they're an all-day or a half-day student, they'll work in that model for half. Um, I think there was some confusion earlier about where they were and which students would go when. What Carolyn and her team have done is they've worked through their guidelines and feel like if Lauren can go back to the slide prior to this, when we're back, um, they are going to go ahead and stay in that half-day. Um, and they've got approval to do that, even though we have some students who are in a full day. We're following our guidelines and they're working with how we're setting up elementary at, at PSD level.
And does that affect kindergarten at all too, uh, for kindergarten half-days, students in full-day kindergarten?
No, it doesn't. We have very, we have, uh, only about, um, I don't know, less than 10% of our current kindergarten students, even we're in a half-day model at this point. All of our, almost all of our kindergarten students, just a little over 90%, or right around 90% are now in a full-day model, so it won't impact that. They'll, they'll follow along the kindergarten, whether they're a half-day or a full-day, will be in the half-day model for those, for weeks two and three.
Thank you.
Okay, Rob, can you pick your up?
All right. So, yeah, so, so, uh, my question, I'll ask it again when Scott does his presentation, but I'm, well, we're talking about schooling here. We're talking about in-classroom schooling. Um, what is our current intent with respect to any extracurricular activities or clubs or any of those kind of, uh, those kind of activities?
Yeah. It, that's a great question. And I also want to add one, one other part to, uh, well, let me answer that question first. Extracurricular, we intend to, in weeks two and three, have what we, you know, our specials classes during the day, but any extracurricular events that are outside the day will not take place. We have stopped all clubs. We have no field trips scheduled through the first quarter, which ends, I think, October 16th or right around October 16th. Uh, so there'll be no field trips there. We will have no, uh, parent volunteers in that first, those, that first quarter. Uh, as far as extracurriculars on things at elementary, we don't have as much of that. We have things that get cooking a little bit later in the year when you talk about Lego Robotics, Odyssey of the Mind and some of those events. At the elementary level, we don't tend to get started on those right away, but if there are anything scheduled that's extracurricular during that first quarter, it is canceled right now. We'll work between the bells.
Okay. And as far as specials are concerned, are, are the specials teachers going into the classrooms or are the kids going to the specials rooms?
Guidance that we're offering right now along to support the guidance we're hearing from Laramore County Department of Health and Environment is for the specials teachers to go to the students. The recommendation is to limit number of students in and out of particular rooms. So our plan right now is for our specials teachers to go directly to the classrooms or outside. Um, I know that group has been working on that already. Melissa Plail's done a lot with the music team and they're just working through those logistics. That, the caveat to that, Rob, is that each school has a little bit of a different footprint and a little different, bit of a different situation. But in general, the plan is for specials teachers to go to the students, not for students to go to the art room, music room, or gymnasium.
Thank you.
I also want to, at, at one point, before I forget and then get, uh, other questions, you'll notice that we do not call the elementary group Phase Three. We are going to only see those students for four total half-days over those two weeks. Relationships, re-acclimating to school, getting to know your teacher are paramount for us in those first two weeks. We will provide students with work on their day off and we'll give feedback on that work when they return. So our teachers at the elementary level intend to provide students with direct instruction on the days that they are there, provide them with work on the days that they are not. And again, we're only in that for two weeks.
On the days that they are not. And again, we're only in that for two weeks. But we didn't want to label it a full hybrid environment because we have some other priorities those first two weeks. Of course. If conditions change and we shift into a full phase three at some point, then we'll be in our hybrid environment. Uh, but the first couple of weeks at elementary, we have a lot of norming to do. We have little kids coming into a different situation. We need to get to know them. Uh, we need to get to talk to them. We need to make them feel comfortable, uh, as we move throughout the year so that they can handle anything that we're throwing at them.
Great. Okay. I have questions from Naomi and then Kristen.
Hi. Masks are going to be required for our little littles. That's right?
That's correct.
Our elementary littles? Yes. So I just wanted to, um, make sure that our general public is aware of that and. Um, I encourage you to have your littles practice wearing their masks at home, maybe plop them down in front of a Disney movie or something. So that they have some practice having it on their face. Um, you know, my kids didn't wear pants the first time I put it on pants, but now they all wear pants to school. So I'm confident that. We can make this shift, um, if we all, uh, take, take it up as, as parents and help them with that. Also, since our, our little kids are going to be wearing masks, all of our kids are going to be wearing masks. Um, that is necessarily going to interrupt the feedback loop. In the classroom because a teacher standing at the front of the room can look out and see confused faces and know what to do. Um, but if you spend a lot of time with people in masks this summer, you know, it's really hard to see what's going on behind there. So also encourage your, um, your littles to make sure that they raise their hands if they have questions. Uh, because the teacher isn't going to know just by looking at their, um, fun print masks. Thank you.
Naomi, I appreciate that. Um, we are definitely talking with staff about things like mask breaks. Uh, you know, I, I think there'll be some adjusting for sure. So I really appreciate that point. To be able for us to get ultimately to phase four, for us to stay in phase four, we need support with the masks. And I would also add, I'm sure Mr. Patterson's glad about the pants thing too.
All right, Kristen, go ahead.
Right, thanks. And yeah, I think we, I, I might even, uh, go so far as to encourage the parents to be wearing the masks as well so that their kids can get into school. Um, and, and, uh, actually everybody can get into school. So. Um, the community, if we could all be wearing our masks when we need to, that'd be great. Um. Questions, um, one about childcare, just want to make sure we have out there, might be jumping the gun a little bit, but. That Alphabet will be doing child, uh, before and after school care. Once we hit the five day week, phase four for elementary, correct?
Yes, they'll actually begin that sooner. I have a meeting this morning. With Mr. Dave McClure, who is our local director. Dave works for Alphabet. And he's made the commitment, he's moved here, moved his family here from Texas. And Dave will be the, uh, administrator for Alphabet who oversees all the directors at each respective school. We met this morning. We intend to do more than just when we have, we'll have before and after school care available, uh, beginning in week two. Uh, families are, you know, kids are going to go to school, families are going to go to work and we'll have a plan announced out to our staff and our community. No later than this Friday. They're working on it as we speak. And we're very encouraged, I was very encouraged in our meeting this morning that they are more than accommodating. They have some really innovative ideas. And I think our community is going to be impressed by the support they're going to offer families and our staff.
So when you say week two, you're talking about the actual first week that kids are going to be in school for those half days?
Yes.
That's fine.
Because keep in mind that anytime we have students in a half day situation during the year. Uh, we still have a before school and after school need. Families still go to work. We just start the care a little sooner. We normally would start at three thirty or. Two thirty now at elementary, uh, we would just start that a little sooner because families are still going to need to count on support. We. I know we have one of our, our parents, I real, I really appreciate our parent comments tonight and give, gave us a good insight into how our families see this. I know some of them are worried about half days and trying to find. Support. That's a, an odd time. It's actually a three hour early dismissal is about what it turns out to be. Uh, but we are, Alphabet does intend to support their customers and their base, starting on Monday, August seventeenth with before and after school.
Great. Thank you so much for your work on that. Um, couple.
Oh yeah, thank them. They've been great to work with.
And a couple more questions going back to, um, the elementary schools themselves and, and let me know if we're going to talk about this later. So if we are, just go ahead and stop me. Um, I just wanted to know about like cleaning, um, how we're going to do bathrooms, how we're going to go through the hallways when we need to. How kids will eventually with the five days, um, and full days be doing lunch. Um, how much outside time kids might have, um, whether they can still be on the playground, you know, that kind of stuff. How? Um, normal are we going to have, um, be able to, to, um? Have classes be or school be for those K through five kids and once we hit the full phase four?
Okay, I'm going to start with the first question regarding cleaning and then Matt can jump in. I know Matt's on the meeting. Um, they have been working all summer establishing cleaning protocols. If you remember when we had everybody take off after the last laptop distribution. We got folks out of the buildings pretty early so they could get in there and do extra cleaning in addition to what we normally do in the summer, which. You can imagine is just a large scale spring cleaning at an elementary school. Um, they are also getting in there and doing some additional work. They also want to let that, that, that set. Um, I think their plan right now, if I understand it correctly, and Matt can stop me if I'm wrong, there'll be some additional work being done throughout the day. Quite often in an elementary or any of our schools, our students see our custodial staff, uh, handling different things, but not so much in the classrooms. They tend to stay out of the classrooms until the end of the day. They. Do something at the beginning or the end. I do know we are looking at protocols, uh, when students are out. For some midday, end day type of things. I don't think that's all been ironed out yet. Uh, I, and Matt, I don't know if you want to add to that. I don't want to steer your thunder there. Maybe you have more detailed info than I have.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's a good overview. Um. By the way, good afternoon, uh, board. Uh, thanks for having us. Um, yeah, Todd kind of hit the, the highlights there. I think some more detail to that, just to let you know, we, we're relying on some technology, some new technologies that are out there for cleaning. Uh, we're, we've, uh, started testing and ordering some, uh, bathroom, uh, cleaning. Um, machines, uh, that take the cleaning down to half the time it used to be. And it's, it's, uh, it's a machine that, uh, sprays the walls, the. The dividers, the floors, everything in there and vacuums it at the same time. Um, got to watch that work the other day in a bathroom and it, and it does just an outstanding job. And I, I think, uh, the important thing to realize of that is that, that investment takes us way into the. Way into the future as well. It's going to be something that, uh, we can use even after. Hopefully all this is over. Uh, so we've also got, um, some atomizers, um. The, some backpack sprayers at, at, uh, graduation. If you were there, you saw the custodians wearing the, uh, the backpacks. They were playing the Ghostbusters theme while they were cleaning the stands, if you noticed. Um, and those things, uh, those things are going to speed up, uh, cleaning as well. Those will be used in the buildings. Uh, each building has one of those backpack sprayers and a hand sprayer that's, uh, kind of the same idea. Uh, we've also got a hand sprayer like that for every school bus. Um, so the school buses will be cleaned. Um, at least twice a day. We'll try to do it between runs as we have time, but we need to have, make sure we have enough time to spray it and let it dry. Uh, so that it's effective. We don't want kids, uh, wiping their seats down, uh, getting off with wet clothes from sanitizer. Um, each, uh, room will have sanitizer in it as well for the teachers, uh. And, and, and equipment like that. So I believe our cleaning is, is taken care of. Um, as far as general cleaning goes, uh, the recommendations are to continue the cleaning processes that we've always used. Um, we will step those up as ti, and timing as much as possible, but our, our normal clean procedures that we've always used. Is effective, uh, to clean the virus in the schools.
Kristen, I'll take your, your other question about just, I, I think you're asking really about how kids are going to move in time and space. How, how normal is it going to be? Um, right now, our plan for lunch is to provide, uh, grab and go type lunch. We are not going to serve hot food in the cafeteria, especially those first couple of weeks. We'll continue our food service work. So students will be able to have breakfast. We will be serving breakfast at all of our schools. We will have lunch provided for our students. Families will be able to purchase a lunch. What we won't do during those first two weeks is take kids to a cafeteria or eat in the rooms. It'll be a grab and go on those days. Uh, I think some of our families will really appreciate the opportunity for students, if they're on their way home to grab a sack lunch. And take that back. They may opt not to do that those first two weeks, but we want to let everyone know it's available. I also know that Matt, who, um, I, I don't want to embarrass him, but the work he and Craig did this summer to feed our families outside of the hours was nothing short of remarkable. And, uh, the compassion they showed for those kids was, was really a blessing for us. And I know that they're really working hard. Uh, on the days kids are off to try to find some kind of solution for those families that count on our meals. And I, I don't have a solution yet and I don't have a plan, but I know they're working on it. As far as. Uh, after that, we'll, we'll likely, uh, consider what our circumstances are when they come back full time and whether or not we'll be able to capitalize on the cafeteria space. Or whether we'll need to keep them co-ordered in their rooms and eat in the rooms. Recession is definitely something that's going to take place. The more we can get outside and get fresh air, the better. We will pay attention to how kids gather. There are certain things they do out at recess. Uh, activities, if you've ever been on an elementary playground, they don't stay four to six feet apart. Uh, they're in collisions, grabbing things, sharing things. We're going to definitely have to modify that. Again, uh, a big part of those first two weeks and having them there is going to be to practice those rules, those new norms and those processes. So they can get some muscle memory on that. Uh, as far as the bathrooms go, uh, we'll be very careful about the number of students in a bathroom. We'll be cleaning those bathrooms throughout the day. Um, we'll probably have some rules as, as far as how students are able to go and, and travel. And, and how we do that. Uh, a lot of that again is going to be determined by the site and the availability of restrooms, their footprint, things like that. Uh, did I miss any of your other ones? Though I don't want to leave anything behind there. I know you had a few questions in, embedded in that one.
Um, I think the only one was, was basically the hallways. I know we talked a lot about going, like having one way hallways, which. Is nice if you can, if you have a circular, um, type building, but if you don't. Do we, do we have a way to manage the hallways?
We're not as concerned about the hallways as we were earlier in the year. Keep in mind that, uh, students that pass in the hallways are not, uh, they're going to have masks. They are not going to be stationary with somebody for an extended period of time. They'll be passing. I think that issue is really pertinent to Scott. And he'll talk a lot about that as the secondary students travel around their building much more frequently and on their own. At the elementary level, we will have signage. We will have areas for students to stand. As far as just passing each other in the hallway, I, I believe those interactions will be so brief that they'll meet the guidelines. Uh, that we have with the mask for social distancing and not putting students in difficult spots. I think the challenge, uh, and again, Scott will speak to that. I think there's a bigger challenge at the secondary level, how, how kids. Scattered throughout the building every time the bell rings. So you should save that question for him. He'll be glad to answer it.
I will do that. If, can I ask one more that I didn't? Or should I get sent to somebody else?
Kristen, why don't we get through your questions and then we'll go over to Nate.
Okay, sounds good. Um, and that question was, um. Go to Nate because now I just. Forgot it.
You're on Nate.
Well, when she, when Kristen remembers her question, I'll yield to her. Uh, my question is. If the, have we gotten down to the level of detail at the classroom level about. Allowing enough time for setup and cleanup? That doesn't include. You know, trying to clean while students are. Either coming or going. Um, or is that something that's been considered? Can you shed some light on that?
I'd say it's probably somewhere in the middle. It's definitely been considered. One of the things that, uh, Jerry Garrettson, who's our director of facilities. Has done is he has set up individual meetings with the principals to consider their own unique locations. And what cleaning may look like. A lot of that depends on where the grade levels are and how they're doing. Yes. Uh, you will have the typical cleaning, Nate, in, you know. What we normally do. And then they're discussing those procedures at that level on what we would want students to do. Uh, you know, we don't want our students being cleaners, but at the same time, we want to pay an attention to things. Uh, we're also not asking our teachers to handle that. They've got enough on their plates already. Uh, but again, I think I'm really confident that Jerry and his team have worked with the respective principals and locations. And I think. Um, the granular plan that you're talking about will be fully into place by the end of next week would be my guess. I, I, I know we want to have those things ready when. Staff return, uh, either on the tenth or the twelfth, so that we can begin sharing those ideas within and practicing them.
Okay, thanks. I'd yield to my colleague from the Northeast District.
I did finally remember. Sorry about that. Um. Going back to the Alphabet, um, that I know you're working on it. Do you think that you'll know details for parents before the August eighth? PSDV deadline? So that they have something to measure?
Yes, we intend to have communications out regarding our plans no later than, uh, we hope to have it all out by Friday. Uh, after my meeting this morning with Dave and listening to the Alphabet team, I believe we'll have information out as well as even signup links. For our families. I believe what we intend to do, uh, for the childcare piece and some of the other folks, uh, other. Things is to give our internal teams, our, our PSD staff, a couple of days head start on that. To help them out. As you know, Alphabet has given PSD teachers and PSD staff a fifty percent discount on their, on their services. And so I think, uh, to make a long answer shorter, we intend to have everything ready by Friday, no later than Monday. So yeah, we'll have it out no later than August third.
Awesome. Thank you. And one more, this is my, actually my original forgotten question. Um, volunteers in the elementary schools. Um, I know we won't be having any. Do you foresee a time when we might be able to have volunteers back in there? Um, just because I know they are an important part of our, um, you know, of helping out, especially in the, the elementary schools.
Oh yeah, we, we, uh, I think one of the most difficult decisions we've had to make, we, we, we struggle with this one is to, is to not have volunteers those first nine weeks. Um, we'll pay close attention that, that nine week period, I, I, again, I think it's October sixteenth, whenever the grading period is over the first quarter. We'll reevaluate that stance at that point. And, and my hope is that we'll be able to have volunteers come in, follow the protocols that we have. Right now, we're just doing it for safety purposes, but. Absolutely. We want to get them back in as fast as they can. They're just so integral to our success at elementary.
I'd, um, I'll throw a question in. So when it comes to Alphabet and the after school care, this is a place where suddenly there's going to be some mixing of students. Um, it seems unavoidable to me, but. I assume you're going through the protocols that we're, we're using in the district and are we expecting, uh? That Alphabet will follow every one of the, the same protocols, whether it's masks or. How kids interact and go to the bathroom, all these kind of things?
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, Alphabet has been with us from the beginning. Uh, they are privy to our internal toolkit. They are also communicating with us about guidance from Larimer County. Department of Health and Environment. They are in contact with the, uh, in fact, Dave is doing a presentation with the Early Childhood Council, I think, next week. So they're getting connected into the community and part of that is they need to follow our protocols. It would be confusing to our students to have a different set of rules. When they, uh, before school go into another location and then after school have a different set of rules. So. They will be following the same guidelines. They're paying close attention to their numbers and the amount of kids they can have in per square foot. And I look for Alphabet. Uh, it's a great time to live in Colorado. The falls are usually dry. They are pleasant outside and we're going to take advantage of that. I know, uh, before and after school care definitely would, uh, if situations could take place, they could get outside. I think we'll do the same. But to answer your question directly, yes, they're going to follow, in fact, we expect them to follow our protocols.
So a question from DJ and then from Carolyn.
Uh, I was just wondering, when you were talking about masks and for like especially the primary kindergarten, are they going to be, do you guys have? Just like the face shields or something that the little kids will be able to see? The mouths better of, of the teachers? Are we providing anything like that for those early? Grades?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll, I'll answer that. That's a two part answer. Maybe Matt wants to jump in as well. We are definitely providing out all of our teachers with what we call a PPE kit. And it's going to have different things in there, um, depending on the level that they like, that they're comfortable with. But one of the things we've been looking at, and I'm not sure where we are on the shields at this point. One of the, the shields provide, it's a double edged sword with, with, uh, face shields. Uh, the county is not confident that they are necessarily a strong support, you know, they strongly support, uh, infection. Or, you know, maintenance there. We, we, we don't think that the shields are the best way to cover faces if we want to prevent spread. We really believe face coverings like masks do that the best. And at the same time, we recognize our younger kids need that face time, if you will, that you're talking about to see teachers. Uh, they, as you know, little kids rely on body language, facial expressions. Uh, tone of voice is a big deal. So there's all those kinds of things. So I think. Our teachers are going to have to find a happy medium with that DJ. They're going to have to find their comfort level, whether that's stepping back. Um, you know, our teachers at the elementary level are side by side with kids. They don't teach from the front of the room. And so that's going to be a big adjustment for them. And, and one of the things that we have learned through our guidance with the county. It is possible for our students to sit in their assigned seats, our teachers to be back, uh, several feet away and be able to take their mask off at times. Uh, and so we're hoping that we find the best answers to that. I think I, I'll be able to answer that more. I think I'll, I'll be able to answer that more clearly and clearly better than this answer. I'll be able to answer that more clearly in another week or so, once they get in and can see what they have and how they, and what their preferences are. But yes, we'll, we'll make that opportunity available for them. Matt, you want to add to that or am I good?
I think you're good. I mean, I, I don't have exact numbers in front of me of the inventory that we have, but I can tell you that we are ordering the Plexiglas partitions so that teachers will have that extra protection if they wanted to sit across a desk with a partition between them and the students. You know, and they, and they would have that extra protection there. We have masks, we have face shields, we have gowns. We're, we're working to provide, as new ideas come up and new thing, new products are on the market to, to help make the environment safer. We're constantly looking at those. Strategic sourcing has, has done a great job in finding vendors and hopefully securing supplies for us as we can, we, as we reorder and getting us on those lists so that we can continue, can have a continuous supply of those items like that, including hand sanitizer and all that. So it's been amazing over the summer, just the different ideas that have come up. And, you know, we've experimented with some, we've rejected some, but we've gone with a lot of them as well. So we're, we're doing the best we can to meet everybody's needs.
I want to also add, it was important to Dr. Smizer and especially that each individual teacher, we talked about this, that each individual teacher had a PPE kit. We wanted to make sure we, not teacher, just all staff, not just licensed teachers, but this is also classified. We wanted to make sure that they felt comfortable with what they had there and then we would evaluate after that. We also, I want to put a plug out too. We have one of our parents, Matt, am I okay to say something about Matt Putnam? I think that's an extraordinary donation. I'd just like to mention that. Matt Putnam is a parent of ours, is a Shepperson and Bolts parent. And Matt is the UC Health Supply Chain Manager. And through his work with UC Health, he has been able to secure for us some donations on some high-grade PPE for us as well. And if Matt, if you're listening, thank you very much. I know we're really grateful when Madeline and Matt Bryant and the team have worked with him. That's another example of the people in Fort Collins step enough to keep our people safe. Really appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Carolyn, I think you have a question, right?
Yes, I do. So regarding Alphabet, I feel like a lot of people in our community right now are experiencing a lot of financial problems. And I would guess that a lot of our families have maybe slipped below the poverty line and that there'll be a greater need for subsidized childcare. So where do we stand with Alphabet for our families in need right now?
Yeah, I think you, you anticipate what we do. We have two ways to take care of that. If, if a family qualifies, if they get below a poverty level and take the steps to qualify for free and reduced lunch, we obviously have a mechanism to take care of that. I think you're talking about folks that may not have, they may find themselves in either a temporary circumstance or something that happened just recently and they haven't been able to go through that. So what we've done is we've built in a way with Alphabet to work with school administrators and counselors. And they'll be communicating with families. And if a family finds itself in a difficult financial hardship and doesn't, maybe they don't qualify for free and reduced lunch. It could be a parent out of work, slowdown for a small business owner. There could be, you know, there's myriad reasons why somebody may find themselves in, find themselves in a struggle. We have accommodations for that. We don't lock it in with Alphabet just for free or free and reduced. We do have scholarship money available and we are working through. One of the great things about Alphabet is they are willing to work with our counselors, our school counselors and our building administrators who are often on the front line and find out about those things before a family would come and share that information. And so they can support those families and they'll constantly, I suspect Carolyn, constantly monitor that until we're in a, you know, in a stable phase four. It's a great point and I think they're well positioned to take care of families, whether they qualify or do not.
If I piggyback on that, Todd, I, I wonder if there's a way for the, the special CARESAC dollars to support that scholarship fund? It's just that, I don't know, you have a great way to answer that, to throw it out there.
Well, yeah, I don't, Dave will slap me if I say something incorrect or maybe care about a lamenta or get nervous if I start talking about CARESAC money, so I won't. I don't think we'll need it. I think the way our financial structures are set up, if we have families like Carolyn's talking about that are in those situations, right now, I don't have a reason to believe we can't support them. If something changes, those may be the kinds of things we look for. It's a great idea. I just don't think we have to activate that yet.
Great, are there more questions at this point in the presentation? I, I might have one more that I'll throw in here, Todd, before we go. We got an email that seemed to be touching, I thought it was an interesting question about how things went with summer programs that were being run through the district and whether any, there's any useful information on how it went. And I don't know that, whether you were on that email or if you've seen that. I know it went to the board.
Yeah, I think I might have been, but I, I really think that's more in Scott's wheelhouse. Elementary students didn't participate.
Okay, that was all at the, okay, in that case, I, I thought it was more elementary, but it sounds like it's more secondary. Got it? Okay.
And I know Scott, Scott's ready for your questions on that.
Okay, are there any other board questions at this point? Okay, great, we'll, we'll push on. Thanks a lot, Todd.
Thanks, everyone.
Well, good evening, board, and, and thanks for taking some time. I, I enjoyed listening to, to my partner and answering all the questions and then sharing what I'm super prepared to answer with all of you. Good to see you all again after just a couple of days. Thanks again for your support of Graduationist last week. Lots of positive feedback that we were able to pull that off and get that done for, for students' families and appreciate many of the staff members who came out to, to support the last year seniors. So it's, it seemed late to get last year done, but now we got last year done and we can, we can point forward. Todd talked about this first four-week chunk, so I won't spend as much time on it as he did, particularly this week one. He talked about secondary looks very similar, right? We need, we need time to get an understanding of how we, what our practices and protocols are to help kids move through time and space and how we get ourselves ready, ramped up to do a, a different rhythm of teaching, right? I mean, we're going to be, we're going to start as a secondary group in hybrid. I know the elementary's, they're going to work through their first two weeks and then they're looking at getting back to full-time. We are planning to be hybrid from the get-go. You can see as you start, we felt very strongly as both middle school and high school groups that we needed sixth to ninth grade transition. This year, our sixth and ninth graders are coming into schools. They lost out on their fifth grade and eighth grade transitional opportunities last spring, so they haven't been in the buildings much like in previous years. So giving them the opportunity to go through transition. We made a decision to do that in A group and B group, so they'll be going through transition with half their peers. That's the first two days of, call it week two. During that time, our seventh and eighth grade and, and 10th, 11th and 12th grade teachers will be doing some virtual learning, but really it's virtual get-to-know-you. How do we start to extend and understand who our students are? How do we give them a flavor of who we are as teachers before they even come into the building and meet us face-to-face? So that kind of activity early in the week, that'll be our Monday and Tuesday of the week of the 24. All of our students at the secondary level will be in for half a day by the A and the B groups. The same way Todd talked about it, we did the same things. Pretty intentional as a district to make sure we aligned our A and B groups all the way through the system from, from our early childhood all the way through seniors. We worked pretty hard to get families aligned so that if, if my high school students in the B group, so is my elementary or middle school students, so that we tried to make it more accommodating for families for whenever we find ourselves in this alternating day of, of school. We get into, to the Friday and our students will be doing remote learning. Our teachers will be doing collaboration, but also supporting learning. Likely that'll be through either office hours, depending on your school, might be department office hours or teacher office hours. Some way to support the learning, but also allowing our teachers those first two weeks to reflect on the first week, try to get an understanding of the rhythm of the teaching, right? How are we, how are we monitoring and, and moving forward with in-person and remote learning simultaneously? Because that's what's going to be kind of this rhythm when we're in phase three. So allowing our, our staff members to do that on Fridays as they prepare for the week ahead, but also reflect on the previous week, thinking about what did we learn? How did we, what modifications do we need to make as a school and as a system from each of the weeks we, we're back in school? One of the things I appreciate about the plan we're putting out, we put out on Monday is we are slowly stepping in so we can learn. There's lots of conversations, there's lots of communication all over the place right now about what's the best way to get back into school. And we really talked as a leadership team about not opening schools, but keeping schools open. We want to have a model that we can get down the road and have our schools open for a long period of time. Not that we can say we were the first ones to open going 100 miles an hour, but not able to keep it open. So we've got to learn, not just before kids get in, but we also have to be able to reflect on and modify our practices and protocols once we get students in. We felt that was easier to do in a half-day with half-students. For secondary, we'll do that the second week also. So when we get to week three, the week of the 31st, we will be in the A group, B group, A group, B group, Monday through Thursday. Friday will be that same teacher opportunity to collaborate, reflect on the week, prep for the next week and support learning that students are doing, likely through the office hours, just like we did the week before. But we get into week four, which for us is the week of the 7th. We come back to school on the 8th after Labor Day. We, we separate from elementary. They're, they're a little more prepared to go all day than we think we will be as secondary. We felt like it was necessary step for us to get all day under our belt before we had all students all day. So we're going to go all day still in our A and B groups of students. I think it's still important to understand how our students are managing being in school all day long. All of our kids haven't done that for a while. Lunch is a question that came up earlier. Lunch is more complicated at the secondary level than it is at the elementary level. Passing periods are more complicated at the secondary level. How we structure class periods for all of our students is more complicated at the secondary level. And so we want to be methodical about how we move through that. And we felt like the next logical step for the secondary schools was to get our students in the building the entire day. That will be the first time we do lunch in the building. Those first two weeks that we have students will be grab and go like Todd talked about. This week will be the first time that we do lunch on campus. Our middle schools will be on campus. We've worked with the health department around what these structures need to look like. I think we saw a question earlier this week about cafeterias. We likely will use cafeterias for a part of our student body. We won't be able to use it like we normally do because we won't be able to have the distance, but we'll need that space in order to accommodate the students. And that's a piece we're working through right now. What is, what are our practices for lunch? But when you think about how many classrooms we have doing lunch all at the same time at the secondary level, it's not going to work out as practical as it might in elementary. For all of our students to go get their lunch, walk back to the classroom, eat in the classroom, just sheerly thinking about who monitors those students when they do that is, is not practical. So we're working through those practices right now. We have multiple options around how we'll do that, but it likely will include some distancing in the cafeteria. Now, the caveat is, when we use the cafeteria, we'll be in assigned seating. And so that, that in and of itself is its own structural opportunity or challenge, however you deem to look at that. But that's work we'll have to do to assign that. When we use the outside for lunch, there's some more flexibility for us. We don't need to be according to our health, working with the health department. We don't need assigned seating outside. We just need to be social distance, recognizing that when we're at lunch, our masks are off so we can eat. And so learning for us as a system, that will, that will be that, that the first time we go through those practices will be in that week four. And then we will evaluate, as Todd talked about, as we get new information, what's the following week? I guess it's the week of the 14th. What's that going to look like for us? We're not prepared to say yet, are we staying in phase three for that week? Or are we comfortable moving to phase four for that second week after Labor Day? I think we'll learn lots once we have students back in the building and we start to get a rhythm and understand how they're responding, how our staff is responding, the safety and the feel of the building. Will all tell us and give us feedback as to what our next move would be. But we feel pretty comfortable right now with the half-students, half-time for two weeks. Half the students, full day every other day in this, in this week four. As our first three weeks with kids, first four weeks of our, of our previous calendar, including that first week that we want to give our teachers some time to get themselves prepared for what we're asking them to do, not just in the first three weeks, but understanding what's in front of them in an environment where we could move in and out of hybrid learning or possibly even go in remote learning for some periods of time. We want to give our teams and our, our teachers time to, to digest, to go through, to continue to do some of the work that many of them are starting next week as they grow their practices and, and understand. And Todd didn't talk about, we talked about it in, in previous board meetings, but, but also build out their teacher learning pages. So that we have that common learning landing spot for parents and students to go after. Those are things that have to be built once our teachers and teams are back in the building. So, so I, I feel pretty good about the way our first three weeks. I'm going to try to tackle some of the questions I heard when you were talking to Todd and then, and then we can go on to, to the questions I didn't answer or if I didn't answer some of your previous questions well enough, you can ask me again. But let me start with athletics. Athletics and activities, which maybe, maybe start with what Kristoff started with, was what do we learn from the summer? And one of the things we had in the summer was permission to do some summer workouts with our athletes. And we actually had summer athletes doing work in some cases as teams, even before they were working with coaches. Coaches were working remotely. We, we got permission from Chassa even before the school year ended for coaches to be doing some remote work and then for students to come back together. And then we opened up our sites for them kind of midway through the summer. And, and then we ended up with a few cases. We ended up with a couple of cases on one particular team and one other case on a different team in a different school. And at that point, we made a decision as a district to slow things down, back up a little bit. Not because we thought we couldn't manage it, but because we felt like slowing that down maybe gave us a better opportunity to open schools up when we got forward. It put us in a better position to open things up. And we didn't think what was going on at that time was necessary. So that, that was some learning we learned. We also had a chance to experience contact tracing. And the impact that could have when we have a case is what are the complications that you run into when you start to, to talk to, to, to Scott and say, okay, so you're positive, who were you around? Who were you in close contact with? And start to, to go out and, and map that. And we learned a lot from that experience and it helps us and it's helped us as we think about how do we keep track of where our individuals are when they're with us during the school day? So that's, that's some simple learning. We also had our music individuals who normally run summer music programs, who were excited, excited to, to run summer music programs. And as it got closer and lack of guidance from, from some of the studies that were happening or from our, our health department, they decided to, to back up and not do the summer music programs. And so is that learning or is that, that was, we just had lack of information? And so the teachers decided it was probably better at that point to pull the plug before we step into it. So we, we, we're not running our summer program. What we know about athletics going forward is we've got some, we've got some recommendations actually today from Chassa. Golf is, has been given permission to start next Monday. So golf is a go for, for high schools to, to run the golf season starting on Monday. I know for some of our constituents in the community, that's a big deal. We have a couple others that are a go and others right now that are yet to be determined. Many of the sports in the fall are yet to be determined. Volleyball, football, boy soccer, yet to be determined. And there's some talk that some of those sports, particularly the more contact-driven sports, football, soccer, sports, football, soccer, pop into my head as I'm talking. There's some talk about moving those into the spring semester, possibly even extending high school sport season until, till after school year is over next, next summer to allow for students to have these seasons. There's also been talk about running some of the sports that have permission. Tennis and softball are the other two that we have permission to start. It's later than golf, but they're, they've got permission to, to go. But the, the talk that I've heard is likely those will be done by middle of October and potentially not having any athletics that run from the middle of October through essentially the end of the year, not final. Those are just, that's just conversations I'm hearing that makes some sense. And then coming back after the new year and having multiple seasons where normally we have two different seasons, redoing it and looking and having three different seasons. If that were the case, Jess said I have a lot of work to do to pull that all off. But that's conversations in motion. That's at the high school level for athletics. At the middle school level, we are looking at moving our own football program out of the fall and, and into the, for the spring. It's a conversation Russ is having with ADs as we speak, running similar to what we're hearing at the state level, that we would make some modifications to seasons, shortening our, shortening our seasons up a little bit, still wanting to give students an opportunity to play if possible. Continue to work with the health department around what those practices and protocols would be. And as we are, as we shifted our start to the school year, we're also going to modify as we run athletics, if the decision is to run athletics at the middle school level, we likely won't even start any middle school athletics until the 15th of September, which gives us a few solid weeks of school before we decide we're going to add in athletics outside the school day. Again, lets us learn and get a sense of what's going on before we add at the middle school level what we control. So that, that's the athletic side of it up in the air as to what and when it's going to be run. The CHASA stuff is in conjunction with the state and looking at the options to support the athletic, the student experience if they, if the opportunity presents itself. From the activity side, I think Rob asked about activities. We are similar to elementary in that we're, we're not going to do volunteers, but one of the things, the benefits we have at the secondary level is if we have staff members who are either running a, a school-sponsored club or a sponsor for a, a student-initiated club, but there are our staff members, those will be permitted to go with social distancing plans and masks required. Again, to, to help students get as close to a normal experience as possible, recognizing that this will not be a normal student experience year. But we still want students to experience things with mitigating risks as we, as we're challenged to do by our health department. So all of those conversations would be, I think someone talked earlier today about rooted in science and we would work with, with the health department as we have for all the things we've done, we've gone with guidance from, from them to do that. I think maybe that takes care of most of the questions and then that I, that I know are out there. Let's go ahead and open them up. As I close though, I would love to say what several of you said earlier. I think this idea of masks is pretty critical. You know, I like to say and people have been, we all mask up, it helps us open up as a school district. I think that's important. That helps us take care of all of us, helps us open the schools and be safe and do.
Great. Thank you, Scott. And I already see one question from Rob so far. Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, I want to follow up on this question of athletics and activities. I, I hear what you're saying, Scott. I remain very concerned that, that, that this may not be the right, this may not be the right trade-off. I think, I understand the desire to give kids as, as, as close to a regular experience as they, as we can possibly do. On the other hand, our primary responsibility is education of the students and we're getting a lot of, well, we have a lot of concern and frankly, a lot of challenge in just getting people through a normal school day. And so I'm concerned that the additional exposure, additional opportunities for mixing our groups in, in activities that are even within a school, let alone the idea that we would have athletic competitions with, with other schools in other towns, strikes me as increasing the, the risk beyond what I think the reward generates. And with respect to CHASA, CHASA, it's great that we get permission from CHASA, but, but I think we have a responsibility as a school district to evaluate that and make our own decisions about, about what, what the right, what the right trade-offs are. And you know, I, like I said, I'm very concerned, particularly when we're talking about inter-school, inter-school, inter-district kind of interaction.
Rob, I think it's fair, right? And, and, and the hard part is all sports are not equal. So all sports don't create the same risk. You know, I use golf as an example. It's probably the most socially-distanced activity that we'll do in a school day. And so I think though, and I'm sure that's why it was first one that was approved to move forward with. Russ and I talk constantly about what the feedback is, what the options are. I think what you're seeing is lots of trying not to cancel things from the state level, but to give some hope to students. I think if football is in the fall, it's, football's a hard one for me to see happening. Just is, has been since May. And as it's still on the possibility of being moved, we, we don't know where we'll be in April or May. So having hope that that's the case is better than lack of hope. And so that, that's, I guess our learning right now is we, we haven't made formal decisions on any of it, other than we will modify, if we do middle school sports, it will be modified to start after the 15th of September. So that's a full month, if you will, after we would have started school typically. That gives us time to make decisions on what we do and decide what we're going to do. And the same is true for some of the other opportunities we have. It's hard for me at the same time to say blanket, no, we're not going to do any athletics or activities. Because I think i- if we're driven by science and risk mitigation, some of those activities or athletics are no more, they, they don't create any more risks than what we're doing having kids in school and do enrich the day. So that's the, that's the, the challenge we have in trying to do what's right, is trying to figure out how do we offer opportunities for students? It's different than what we offered in the spring and what, what's the level that's right? And that, that, that's a challenge, no question.
I, I, yeah, I absolutely agree that there's a balancing thing going on here. And one of the, one of the things that I think affects whether we go forward with this is the behavior of the students involved, frankly. You know, we've had, as you alluded to, we've had reports of, of students, I mean, I, yeah, we've had reports of student athletic teams getting together, I think without coaches, no social distancing, no masks, no nothing, right? And I'm talking softball here in this case, right? Which is one of the things you said were approved. And this is within our own school district, within one team within the school, right? So the idea that the students are then going to go to another district or another school and, and maintain social distance is, I'm struggling with that, with that belief right now. It's really up to, at some level, up to the students and their, well, we'll get to the community later, but it's up to the students to step up to behave in a way that reinforces or allows the opportunities that you're talking about to take place in a safe way. And if they can't step up to those opportunities or those responsibilities, then I don't see how we safely offer the opportunities.
Rob, I, I can't argue. I think it's, that's fair. I do think some of what we've seen this summer is students have done it right. And, and we've had some baseball and softball that, keep in mind, baseball and softball in the summer, they're not PSD's programs. They're those affiliated city programs that they are running and they've ran all summer long like there's nothing going on. And that's a challenge, right? When you walk out and see there's nothing going on, there's no, no issues, that's a challenge. That creates a challenge for our district. As much as I celebrate what happened with graduation, I think what happened at French Field was pretty phenomenal. And yet what I know, well, I haven't had a senior, is there were plenty of celebrations, if you will, that I don't think, pretended like there was nothing going on. And, and that's choices people make that impact our district. So Rob, I do believe there's, doing it the right way is going to be important, whether it's in practice or whether it's, we're going to a baseball diamond to play some other school or a softball diamond to play some other school. What are the practices that have to be in place in order for us to do that? I'll give you an example. Boulder has, has said anybody that's coming into their district to play are going to be wearing masks. And that's something we're looking at right now, but we got to look at the science side of it too, right? Is it healthy for all our players to have masks on? But that's, that's them making a statement that that's what they value. We're going to play, but we're going to play with masks on. And so that's, again, that's something we're looking at right now. We've not made a decision for sure what direction that is. I'd like to get some understanding of, of what's the, what's the risk of doing rigorous exercise with a mask on? And I, but, but that's an example of controlling what you can control.
Okay.
I, I appreciate that and I, I thank you for all your thoughtful, thoughtful work on this.
Nate had a question and Kristen had a question.
Yeah, I guess mine's more of a comment. As we're going into this school year, we're going to be making choices that have risks and making other choices that have more risks or fewer risks. And I appreciate Scott's admonition that we need to help educate our students to try to make the right choices, but we could decide to go totally remote from the beginning, but then we would lose the interaction between students and teachers and staff that's critical to getting off on the right foot, like Todd said. And we could go totally in person, but that's not our best thinking at the moment. So there's going to be risk involved in whatever we do. And I appreciate Rob's point that we need to balance the risk versus the benefits, but I don't think discounting or, or prohibiting extracurricular activities without any thought about the particular activity is necessarily the way to go. And it's a tough balancing act, but it's part of the educational experience. So I think we need to go forward and, and try to make the best decisions we can with the information available. And with respect to Boulder Valley and their masks, maybe we go like the Power Five conferences that, in football, that said, no non-conference games. Maybe we don't play Boulder Valley because we can't, we don't feel like we can have athletic competitions wearing masks. It may be something that we decide to do. So I know we're all going to be trying to make the best decisions we can as we go forward. And I would like us to all be, to have full in-person classes, but I appreciate that we feel like the hybrid model is the way to go at this point, at least after the initial breaking in period. So that's it. Thanks.
Kristen, go ahead, please.
Okay. So again, I have a few. So just stop me, Kristoff, when you want me to move on to somebody else and I'll come back. But Scott, the first one is actually going back to Rob's question of the athletics. And I guess my, my concern is, would we be using busing? That would be necessary for, actually, let me back up. If, if the busing is still limited, so that we can only put 22 kids on a bus, would it be wise to then take buses and send kids down for the golf team to a different school? Or would it be better to be using those buses to get more kids to and from school at that point? I guess my concern on that is the bus, you know, that busing situation, we don't really know what it is yet.
Yep. So Kristen, I, transportation is a great question. And I mean, there's, there's like, there's like three questions inside of that one because transportation is a challenge, right? There's, there is, there's no reason we should take busing at any point in a, in a normal year, any year, and say we can't transport our kids to and from school so we can get them to a sporting event. And that's, those are choices we've had to make in the past, where we can't transport all athletic or all activities because we're either short drivers or we have all our routes or whatever their case may be. So that, that would be the way I'd respond to that. In addition though, we're all already talking about how does transportation look if we run athletics this year? What is our, how do we do it? Because if it's 22, 25, 30, 35, if it's not the normal amount, are we still, is it still something we're willing to commit to? Or does it look different? And so those are conversations we're engaging in as we speak around what might that look like? How does that impact the overall opportunities we have? And you know, there's kind of a chicken and the egg. When we don't know what, what the possibilities are, it's hard to answer. So we've been running scenarios in terms of if, if this is what's happening, how might we get? Track is a good example, right? We run track for our middle school. And in some of our middle schools, that's 100, 150 kids at a track meet. So we might have to modify how that all works. We might have to modify how that all works from a transportation standpoint, but also from a practicality standpoint. So, but yeah, we shouldn't steal a bus from, from moving students to school to take them to golf.
Okay. And I think part of that just, I, I don't, it's not that I want to take away the athletic portion of it. I, I feel like we can still have the athletics after school, but it may be the competition that has to take a sideline this, this year. So you can still play tennis, it's just going to be hard to play tennis against another school or another district, but we still have that opportunity.
There's a priority.
Sorry?
There's a priority I hear, right? You're prioritizing.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And then I had different questions. I don't know if anybody else wanted to jump in on that athletics before I moved on to something else.
Kristen, why don't you go ahead? And if anybody else has questions, will you raise your hands now, well, no eventually to, to switch directions? So, but why don't you keep going a little bit, Kristen?
Okay. One of the big questions I have is for those teachers who are in a school that is on the block system. How does that look different than, again, let me back up just a moment, looking for maybe a typical day for a seventh grader, a typical day for a 10th grader? And how is that different from somebody who's in a block schedule versus somebody who's in a more typical schedule?
So right now, I mean, if you're talking about the teachers, if we talk about a teacher at Polaris, that teacher teaches three of the four block periods in a typical day. Students would be there, they take four, call them 90-minute blocks, they're close to that. Teacher teaches three of those and has one of them as their planning time. If we go to the other schools, mostly, I'll just talk high schools right now, most of the other high schools, it had quite different schedules in the past. I'll use Pooter as an example. Pooter had a, a schedule that was like seven schedules wrapped into one. And they have, or this year, redone their schedule so they look much closer to Rocky's or, or a block like that, that allows their teachers to have less instructional planned periods, but also allows their students to have less periods of school at any one time. So the students won't have So, the students won't have eight classes at a given time now. They'll be like, like Rocky where you have four instead of eight. And again, that's a direct result of, of walking through this and trying to limit the number of transitions kids might have, but also making it easier to move in and out of Phase Three, Phase Four, Phase One. And that's easier to do when I have three classes as a teacher instead of six. So, so that, that's the difference. Similarly, at, at Collins and Fossil, they will have four classes in a given day. The teacher will teach three. The difference in those two schools is they have four classes each day. So, kids over two days will have eight, but they've gotten, they've, they have, they, they no longer have the, the period or the school days where they have all their classes. So, they no longer go on a given normal school day to eight different classes or seven different classes at Fossil. Does that make sense?
The question I guess then becomes, so, does that mean if you're doing four-day, uh, four class periods per day and you're doing A B, does that mean that you see your teacher once a week for a particular class?
For our Phase Three right now, that is what it would mean. If you're at Fossil Ridge High School, you're going to see your teacher for 90 minutes each week in the A B model.
Okay. And to follow up with that, what is that?
If you're at Rocky.
Okay, and so, and so, like, if, if you're talking Pooter or Rocky, you'd be seeing the same teacher for 180 minutes per week, per class?
Keep in mind, though, that what they're doing is, I mean, at Rocky, they're, they're trying to get a whole semester done in the first nine weeks. Or at Fossil Ridge High School, they're only trying to get the first quarter done in the first nine weeks. So, it feels like a lot of difference, but we have explored, I think the principals, quite frankly, still are. And if I could give a shout out to IT right now, I, I T right now is still working with our schools on schedules and options. And usually, that's locked up in early June. I T's still cranking with our high schools as they play with ideas like, could we teach just our, our odd classes first quarter and our even classes second quarter? So, that's, and that gets to the Rocky idea. Where it's challenging, given the schedule they have, is then your student would have the first, the first semester of math, first quarter, and the second semester of math would be third quarter. So, it's, it's tricky. But I, our schools have not given up looking at that. Pooter's pulled it off. Rocky's in a good place. Polaris is in a good place. Centennial feels strong. PCA is, and, and Collins and Fossil continue to work hard to make what they feel like is the best decision.
What about the middle schools? Are they working on that as well?
Middle schools are in a pretty good spot where they don't have more than four a day. And they're all pretty similar in the way they're running their schedules right now.
And to follow up on that, what does that look like for the teachers then? You said they have one fewer planning period per day. So, does that feel like more work for the teachers?
No, the teachers actually don't, the teachers still have, in, in the, if it's four classes a day, the teacher have three classes they teach and one period off, one period's their planning period. And that'll be more similar this year than it probably has been in a while, just given that our schedules have morphed into being more similar than they have been in the past.
All right. Why don't I let DJ get in with his questions? So, thanks for being patient, DJ. Can DJ, please unmute?
DJ, I think you're.
Yeah, how about I do that? I think at this point, my question kind of got answered. What I, I just want to clarify something is that Scott mentioned a few times about, you know, we feel like this is the best that we can do right now. And I, I just want to clarify that we, we are, you know, basing a lot of this on the science and the numbers that we are getting from our county health department. And part, you know, part of the reason that we, at least my understanding is, one of the reasons that we're doing the elementary, getting into Phase Four right away is that younger kids seem to be a little bit safer dealing with this aspect versus the older kids are definitely transmitting it more. And, and that we are listening to what science is out there and we're being extremely flexible in what, what we're going to do. And I, and I appreciate Scott mentioning the IT department too in that is that, I mean, this is a full range of ideas that we need to be flexible on. And there's so much to be able to, be able to turn these things. And how we have been able to set up what we hope is going to happen here in, in three and a half weeks or four is, is great, but we, we do have an understanding that this definitely could change. I just want to make sure that that is out there. And then clarification, if I'm understanding correctly, why we are doing the middle and high school students different versus the elementary?
DJ, I think you said it well.
Rob?
Yeah, I want to make a, a sort of a closing statement later on, but, but, but I just want to clarify that my comments earlier were not only about athletics, right? Athletics present a particular problem because we have more inter-school and inter-district competitions. Well, I know that's true. I mean, we have music competitions that are inter-district and all that too. So, my, my comments are about all activities and, you know, I agree absolutely that we should be smart in looking at which ones make sense and which ones don't make sense. I'm just, I guess urging caution and not, and in addition, with, as it relates to activities, which are beyond athletics as well, that are sanctioned by CHASA, that we use our own judgment as well on what makes sense to keep our students in our community safe.
Rob, I appreciate that. And, and, you know, I, I think, well, I think it was you earlier, or maybe it was Nate, to talk about kind of this risk versus opportunity. And, and I, I'll just say to this group tonight that, that in, in education, 25 years, and never has that been more in my face, more in our faces than it is every day for us right now, right? The number of decisions we're, we're thinking about and that are getting run through the wringer about risk and opportunity right now, it's daily, it's multiple times a day. And I think people in the system would tell you that we're saying no to lots of things right now. It feel odd to say no to. But that's just what's, that's where we live right now. And at some point, we have to start to break through that. And what's the right opportunity to break through that and to start to move back the other direction? That's what everybody's trying to figure out, including us. I do feel blessed to have the team we have in PSD. But I also feel blessed to be in Lerner County where the health department's been phenomenal, accessible for us. They've come to meetings with us and our, our EEA reps and our ACE reps. And they, we just live in a phenomenal community to try to do this work. And I wish there was guidance. I wish there was voices that said, "Here's best practices." Well, nobody's been through it before. We have to think through exactly what you're saying, Rob. We got to think through, what are the right steps to take? And we're trying hard to, to methodically do that and, and putting lots of energy into it every day. And like I said, it's, it is more in our faces than, than I've ever experienced, for sure.
Okay. I, I might have a question. Oh, go ahead, Kristen and Nate, and they'll have a question somewhere. Go ahead, Kristen.
Okay. And Scott, if you could kind of walk me through this. I think there are a lot of parents out there that are still sort of wondering what, what a typical week is going to look like for their students once we hit Phase Three moving forward. So, like, could you, could you kind of walk through what a typical seventh grader would go through? Maybe a typical 10th grader would, would, what it would look like Monday through Friday, Phase Three?
Sure. And I, I'll try to do it. I'm going to do it at a high school in a block and I'll do a middle school in a modified block, so they can see the four versus eight. Let's assume at, at a, at a block schedule, a student has math, science, social studies, language arts, just because it's easy for me to remember that. So, in that model, if we stay in Phase Three, those individuals would have all four of those classes on a Monday and a Wednesday if they're an A student. And then on a Tuesday and a Thursday, they would be doing remote learning. The flipped classroom will be used a lot. So, you're getting some of your instruction in the day. You're not in the building and you're getting to do and practice the work when you have support from the teacher. That's a practice that could be utilized a lot in that model. And you're reinforcing and, and doing work on the Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday if you're an A student. So, that, that's a typical week. Those, the Monday and Wednesday are going to feel like, like, I'm going to say, normal school days, except you're sitting in a class with 15, 16, or 17 students with six feet between you in a classroom in a mask. So, how normal does that feel in the classroom? But that's, that, they're going to be with their teacher. They're going to be moving through the halls. We are looking at staggered opening and entering of the school as best we can. We'll be staggering how they move around in the passing periods and as best we can, encouraging kids to go in a direction. Those are site kinds of things based on how sites are set up. But in general, the school day will feel relatively normal in terms of going to a 90-minute class, doing the work you might have done in there, but also supported by what instruction could have happened the day they're out of school? What practices they do the day they're out of school? How's that reinforced when they're in person? But that enhances a lot of what we were able to do last year, which last year, we were trying to do it all remote. Now, we've got two of the five days that they're with us. If you're at one of our middle schools in a, in a, where you have eight classes at one time, and that's the model they stay in, then you would come in and see a set of four of your teachers on Monday. And then on Tuesday, you would see four of your remote, you would do four of your classes remote. On, on Wednesday, you would see the other four of your teachers. And on Thursday, you would see remote for four of your classes. And then on Friday, it's reinforcement for the eight classes. Kind of think about it as your, your, what used to be the, the day you had all the schools. You've got a little bit of reinforcement that's happening on Friday, potentially for any of the classes that you have. And in some cases, depending on your classes, you might have very little or nothing to do on Friday. In other classes, like a math class, you might have work to get done on Friday. So, that's what your Friday would look like. Again, supported, as I talked about earlier, by teachers through an office hour kind of model.
Yeah, the only question.
Scott, can we get a.
Maybe this will help clarification-wise. DJ, if it doesn't, I'll let you jump in. But on the day that you're working remote, so Monday, you see your teacher for history. When you're working remotely the next day for on history, do you have the same teacher or is that a different teacher?
No, it's the same teacher. It's the same teacher, but you're not working, you know, so, I, I'll just, I'm going to use the flipped model as an example. If, if I'm doing the flipped model as a history teacher, that Tuesday, when you're remote, might be my lecture. So, that's what I'm doing on that day is I'm doing my lecture. I'm guiding the students. I'm doing my teaching in a video model, so I don't have to repeat that every class period I have. And then when I have them in the class period with me, I'm able to do whatever practice I want to do. I don't have to get up and, and drive the, the lecture before I get them started. So, so they're still seeing, hearing from me, but it, but it's like it's asynchronous on that day. It's not, they're not joining the classroom. Now, the other model that we'll be able to, to utilize this year, and you'll see utilized very early in the year, is models where teachers are comfortable having some of their students remote and some of them with them and being able to pull that off simultaneously. But that's pretty advanced. So, that's not something I would expect all our teachers are doing right out of the chute. But that's what we did for our, our culminating administrator retreat is we had our, our administrators in different locations and I facilitated from different spots, all, some live and some memorex. So, we'll be learning all of that as we get into the year, but it will be the same teacher. Their history teacher will be their history teacher all the time at both levels.
Nate, you want to jump in? Unmute?
Sure, I had two questions. One was, I apologize if this was covered before. When will, assuming I'm a Pooter School District student, when will I decide? When will I learn whether I'm an A student or a B student?
So, they can see that right now in, in parent view and student view. At the elementary, middle, and high school level, it's, it's in there. And we know, they know about it because we've had lots of families ask to, to adjust. So, we know that it's out there. And for me, I know my daughter's what, what she is. So, that's how you can see it right now. It's in student view and parent.
Okay. And the other question I'll phrase is a cross-examination question. Isn't it true that even if CHASA gives us guidance or permission to participate in CHASA-sanctioned athletics and activities, that we as a district can make a decision about whether we're going to offer those? We're not required to participate in all the activities that CHASA allows districts to participate in?
That is a true statement. And I, I would give you a, cite an example right now that I believe is going on, right? Is they're having conversations about football moving to the spring. We have several of our smaller districts, some that aren't very far from us here, that are saying, "We're doing it in the fall regardless. That's when our football season is and our, our kids want to play football then." And our, everyone in our league is saying they're going to do the same. So, you could end up in a, in a scenario where you have some districts following CHASA's guidelines, some not doing it at all, and some not following it. So, you could end up with kind of three scenarios this year for sports.
Scott, I have a question I'll go ahead and ask. When, when I reflect, and this is really for both of you and possibly Matt as well, Scott and Todd. I mean, you know, in, in thinking through the, the types of questions and emails the board is getting, there's several types, and we're getting a lot from teachers that are expressing concern that we're, essentially, they're saying we're not looking out for their safety. Is there anything that you can identify in, in these emails that you're also receiving, I think, that you can point to that, that does look like a fallout? Or I guess prioritize that you can move to the top that we can, that we can address? And one of the things that jogged my memory on this was Matt mentioned that we're, we're trying to purchase these Plexiglas shields for the front of their desks. And I'm wondering if there are some of these things that you guys are, are seeing that they're feeling makes them not feel safe, that maybe we can address to help the situation?
I'll take, I'll take one of those, Scott, if that's okay with you. One of the ones, and this isn't a tangible item, Kristoff, but one of the things that we're paying close attention to and working carefully with Lerner County Health is what, that we have a clearly understood and well-executed plan for how we close, how we adjust, when we have cases. I know one of the concerns out there is, are, are we, do, do we have a, a clear plan when somebody is infected, somebody is positive? And what does that mean to the environment around them? And I think a lot of, a lot of the emails I've received are, I mean, not so much maybe as worried about it as questioning when they're going to know what it is. How is it going to take place? And I, I like to reassure that group that we'll have information, you know, as early as, as, into this week, early next week, that'll, that'll provide clear guidelines for what we'll do in every situation in a school when we have, when we have a case. And, and I know that uncertainty sometimes creates anxiety. It does for me. When I don't have my questions answered, I go to the worst place, and that's understandable. You know, I, I think one of the things I, I would tout is we are going to work, we are working with Lerner County on what a closure plan looks like. And we're going to be able to reassure staff that in any situation when something arises, we have a response to it, ranging from, you know, taking care of one kid to shutting down a classroom, to shutting down a school. We will have all that in place and clearly understood by them. That week, their first week they're back on August 12th, we'll talk about it in our school environments and we'll probably put some information to them prior. and we'll probably put some information to them prior to that, working through their, working through their representatives. That would be one I would point out right away. I hear a lot in emails. I don't know, Scott has one he wants to mention. I could probably pull out a few more as well.
I would just say, and it's sort of piggybacking on what Matt said earlier, but it has been looking at what are the, what are the guidance from our health department and from science in general around things like band or choir? But also going back to the PPE kits that Todd talked about early, right? Is that every teacher having a mask and a gator and the possibility for a shield. And we're working on the Plexiglas for every staff member. Trying to do things that allow teachers to get in the classroom to do the work that they love, but also to mitigate the risk as the health department is telling us, right? But as we do that, also bringing the health department along to work with individuals from the system rather than work through us. Much of it this summer was they worked with our leadership and our leadership then passed it on. And we saw just a week or so ago how much more power it had. Some of our leaders from our groups were able to sit with leadership from the health department and hear what their recommendations are and how encouraged they are with our planning and how important they think it is to get our students back in for the safety purpose. That was, those were good strategies. I think we've got some others out in front of us that, that we'll continue to build on. How do we communicate the practices we see are important? How do we do that through written, but also how do we do that through video? And possibly how do we also do that through kind of a panel discussion? So those are all out in front of us as we continue to try to build a pathway to that first.
Oh, Todd, do you have another one? Unmute?
Talk about this, brought it up before. Our teachers also need support when we have safety protocols in place that they get the backing to carry those out and support them in that and make sure they're followed. We do not want our teachers being in situations where they're arguing with a student about a mask or a parent. We want to make sure that if there are protocols in place, they're closely followed. And teachers are going to have enough on their plates to consider when it comes to teaching and safety and everything else. They need our support as administrators to know that when rules are in place, they're going to be followed and we're going to enforce them. And as much as we don't want to be in a situation of compliance all the time, they can count on our support in that. And I think that's a worry. I hear teachers talk about periodically is, you know, what if we have rules in place and they're not followed? What are we going to do? They should expect and count on their administrators to support them and help keep them safe. And I think that's another thing we would put in there. I know that's again, not a tangible item like Plexiglas or a gator, but it's also critically important for them, I believe.
Thanks. I mean, actually, those are all really great. I wonder, I think the board knows that you're, the two of you, well, staff is communicating, for example, with the leadership level of PEA and with the principals. Can we count on that information really disseminating into those people that are doing the work? Because I think, as I think of what we're all balancing here, it's really bringing people together. You know, the people that are really clamoring to get schools open along with the people that are having to do the work and have the fears. And it feels like with those answers, you are working very hard to mitigate the risks. What I, what I hope to find out is that that's being, that the teachers are being informed of that to the point where they eventually can feel safe. So it's somewhat of a question, more of a comment, I guess, so.
Krista? Could I also just-
Yes.
Let me just add, I know we've mentioned them before, but that we're also working closely with ACE as well. And they were also, their leadership was in our meeting with the health department as well. So just all the critical people who are driving buses and cleaning and doing all those things. We just want to remember that they are in the circle with all the rest of us in this.
Are there more questions? Or I know some board members want to make some final comments. Go ahead, Kristen.
Okay, yeah, and I think to those last couple points, over-communication is not possible here. So I think we just need to keep letting teachers know, keep letting parents know, keep letting, you know, the community know. I don't think we can over-communicate what's happening and to help teachers and students and parents feel safe going back to school. The last actual question that I have is about busing. Do we know anything about busing yet?
Kristen, we're working on busing. We have moved to the one to twenty-two, but actually we've got new, new guidance from the health department today that I think we've got to sort out, and we're meeting on that tomorrow. So what we do believe, the last we had met, we felt like we were likely going to have access to transport the students that we had received requests for transportation for. So above the ones that we had requirements to transport, we put out communication asking families to register. And the last we talked, we felt like we were likely going to be able to transport all those families. If it changes, we may be able to open it up for more as we get going.
Yeah.
Okay, DJ?
All right, I got a couple here. But first I have to acknowledge that there's been problems with sound, and they haven't been able to hear Scott as well. And I love the fact that they said maybe Todd should hog the mic. I thought that was like, I don't know what they're asking, but they should realize what they're asking for. But, all right, so my questions are, do we have plans for kids that might need extra help? How are we going to be able to get, the one that comes to mind is reading. Are we, do we have a system in place for, to help this transition? I think this is going to be really hard on them, especially English language learners also in that same aspect. Do we have plans on how we can help that situation more? One of the meetings that Kristen and I were on, they even talked a lot about if there's an opportunity to help parents get some better understanding to be able to help with the online stuff and training. So if you guys have any comments or thoughts about that.
Part, DJ, one of the things we're paying close attention to, regardless of the environment they're in, whether it's PSD virtual, whether it's in the hybrid model, I can tell you from the EL standpoint, John McCain is paying close attention to numbers and making sure staffing is adequate, whatever scenario our English learners are in. We are still going to monitor and maintain our read plans for students that show a significant reading struggle. That's not going to change. So I think the most reassuring comment I can make is our teachers are fully tuned in to who those students are. And one of their concerns always is can they meet those needs? And they got pretty creative in the spring. I know that in each grade level, at the elementary level, again, any student on a read plan, any student that struggles, teachers are available to provide that additional help. If they get into PSD virtual, again, John, Sarah Blue, Robert Bochampos that are involved in exceptional learners are working closely with staff to create protocols so that students don't miss out, regardless of what learning environment or phase that they're in. I've been really encouraged by what I've seen. And I have a lot of faith in our staff when they, when they have students who struggle, though they radar right onto them anyway. It's just natural for them as caring teachers, and I don't think that'll change regardless of whether we're in phases one, two, three, or four.
Is there any possibility of upping the involvement of paras to be able to have one-on-one time or stuff with students virtually?
Virtually definitely makes sense, depending on the scenario or condition, learning conditions the students are in. We probably will minimize a lot of our small group one-to-one type behaviors initially from the outset, just because we're following some of the protocols that say try to keep kids in a cohort, try to limit their contacts. At the same time, we aren't going to sacrifice their needs and the things we have to do for them. I think Sarah's team has done a great job considering all those elements and what teachers do in the room. And my guess is, once we get the year started, we're going to have teachers that are going to come up with great ideas on how to meet those needs. I do expect families and teachers to interact more with struggling students. We, you know, as far as the partnership goes with home and school. But I've seen nothing to this point that shows me there's going to be any slowdown on how we support students and their needs.
Okay. And my last question is about subs. Do we, are we feeling good that we are going to have adequate number of subs signed up? And do we have a, I know in the packet it talks about doing a little bit of training with them. And I just wondered what that kind of entailed.
I think that would be a better question for Vicky to answer.
Agreed.
Hey, look at that.
Hi. Yeah, we do have a plan for subs. We are going to be hiring long-term subs for each location. So depending on the size of the building, kind of there's a ratio of how many subs per student enrollment. We're anticipating, so those emails have gone out to subs and to principals to encourage them to apply for those postings, which will be up probably tomorrow or by Friday to start applying for those long-term subpositions in the buildings. And then we're also working with professional development to provide some additional training for subs, especially on how to work remotely if needed.
Okay, so because, this is really the large subject tonight, I'm going to keep going with the questions. So I believe we have Naomi, then Kristen, and then Rob. So let's go in that order.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say I really appreciate what I am terming the ski resort approach. So we don't want to be the first to open, but we want to stay open. And I think that, you know, we don't know what we're going to see until we get into the building. And again, I just want to say to our community, please wear your mask, wear your mask, wear your mask. It is the, the single greatest thing that we can all do to help each other in getting our littles back into school. And finally, we are lucky that this is happening in the 21st century because we have the opportunity to provide robust education via computers. We have the opportunity to provide meeting and extracurricular opportunities via computers. You could have an art class over Microsoft Teams where you do a Bob Ross lesson. I don't know. Lots of things are possible here if we all remain agile and we all remain flexible and we all remember that we are literally in this together. And if some of us decide that precautions are too much, that is going to affect everyone. So please, friends, let's, let's remember that we can do this as long as we are together. And that I know that you all want information as fast and furious as possible. And I'm in that boat too, because I've got three kids here in PSD. And so let's, you know, let's just keep on keeping on and make the best choices that we can moving forward. Thank you, everyone, for all of your hard work.
Kristen?
So my question is more for the IT department. I know they had been running help sessions on how to use Zoom and Teams and CSO and all the other things that kids were using. Is it possible that we have those sessions, those help sessions again for parents? And can we have them in Spanish and any other languages that might be needed?
Yes. We're already getting requests, Kristen. We, you know, at the end of the year, our teachers spent a great deal of their time. And I know this because I live with one. A lot of parents in earnest just asking how to navigate through to make sure their kids are connected. You know, they want to do that. And so our teachers, what you ended up seeing at least at elementary level was the homeroom teacher would work with the families and they would help get them back on track. It may just be a simple thing. And our teachers became kind of Geek Squad, so to speak, for tech a few times. We also, our help desk and our IT department was available and they took hundreds and hundreds of phone calls. Our PD department has set up information for staff, but we're also working on how we help families. I know there's some information or some discussions going on right now about what that may look like via PTOs, whether it's something centralized. But yes, I know we're working on that. As far as the Spanish piece, I can't quite speak to. I'm not exactly sure where they are with that, but I do know that they're feeling like they're going to be able to provide some parents with some guidelines, particularly if we have some sustained time in remote.
Thank you. And even if we don't, just for that AB, I guess for, less for elementary, but for the older students, parents may need some help as well. And it would be fantastic if we could do it in a translating even situation, the way we've done with a couple of our meetings like MiVOS. That would be fantastic.
Great feedback, Kristen.
Rob? And then Nate?
So I have a couple of question-like things. One of them, well, one of them is a thank you. I really appreciate the creativity that Vicky, that the subplan demonstrates. I think the idea of getting long-term subs, so you minimize the number of people in and out of the building and all that is a really good idea. And I appreciate, appreciate the thought that went into that. The other thing that I wanted to say again, in the realm of a question, is we've talked a little bit about teachers and some of the concerns, and we've certainly gotten a bunch of emails from teachers. How do you, how would you characterize the mood of the teachers at this point relative to the plan and going back into the buildings? And how do you know and how are you going to monitor that going forward?
You want to go first, Todd? Do you want me to?
Go ahead, Scott. I'll finish up. I'll take on whatever you don't address.
Rob, I think we've got.
And just quickly, I said teachers. Just quickly, I said teachers, but plus all staff.
We have feedback, formal feedback from our teacher group, our principal group, and we're awaiting feedback from our ACE group. And much like the emails you and us are receiving, we have some of our staff that are gung-ho and ready to go back in and think we, we need to get back in, and the risk is, is too high for students not to be in school, all the way down to the teachers who think it's far too risky to be in school and others in between. And we've taken that feedback into consideration and trying to mitigate. We will continue to communicate. We have done work, as we've talked about on this meeting, bringing PEA, PACE, and ACE together to meet, work, and to create some communication. Our three presidents sent out communication, I think it was on Friday or Saturday, to their groups, communicating about the meeting we had last week and the direction we were headed. And we got some feedback that day about what we were thinking, right? We tried to get some input as we were talking that day about what were some of the trepidations in the system? What were our responses to those? How did they feel about our responses to those? And then how did they feel on the front side of about some options that ended up being in the plan? And that, that meeting went very well. They were, they were very positive about how that felt. And that's what's directed us to do some of what I talked about earlier in thinking about how do we continue to communicate? And not just in written form, but in, how do we do it in, in a form where our individual teachers can see what's going on and the confidence we have and potentially bringing in the health department alongside and gathering feedback along the way. Trying to get a sense from all three of our leaders. I know they're going to continue to have IR. I think they have it again tomorrow. So we'll get a sense in IR of how our groups are feeling and where we go from there. So, Todd, what'd I miss?
I think the only thing I would add is I think our teachers, one of the- I think the only thing I would add is I, I think our teachers, one of the, I, I wouldn't change anything. I agree, the gamut runs from those who are ready to, are, are ready to go, want to get started, and those that have legitimate concerns about the health and the health of others. And they're all right. And they all have their own personal experiences they bring to the table. And we are trying to be sensitive to that. I agree with Scott that Joni and John and Kristen, our employee group presidents, are working with us. They're asking tough questions. And they are, at one point, I think we decided when we met with them in the health department that shortly, we are going to put together a Q and A, kind of like a panel group. We will have the employee group presidents with us and we'll start answering questions. But none of that is a substitute for the kind of information they'll get when they come to their sites. I, I know that a lot of them are getting down to the point where, how's the room gonna get set up? How can I maintain safety in the room? And they gotta get in there and have those conversations with each other, with their principal, with their assistant principal, with their counselor, and try to sort some of that out in the environment they're comfortable in. We're gonna continue to monitor. John was gracious enough to share the PEA survey results with us. That was so great, gave us a good insight. I know Joni's working with ACE to get that work put together. Pace, Kristen Stoltz, he got a survey out and got that information back to us. So we're trying to make, we're trying to be aware and sensitive to all three work groups, the issues that they have. And I, I don't wanna say we wanna land in the middle because that's too simple. I think what we wanna do is be thoughtful and considerate of all of the issues. Every concern is legitimate and then take our best shot at opening. I, I know we'll continue to dialogue. PEA's been great to work with us. They still have concerns. Their teachers have concerns and we just wanna keep talking and keep answering questions and keep trying to sort through it. Thankfully, we have a few weeks to do that. We got the extra week with the 17 to get in the environment and practice. But I, I would be, I would be incorrect if I said everybody's feeling great, everybody's happy. That's not the case. We're, we're, this is a difficult time for everyone and, and concerns about bringing issues back to their own home environments, their own children. We have all kinds of employees that work and live with grandparents, parents, their caregivers. Those are all legitimate things that we have to consider as we put this work together. And I, and I think we're monitoring it as carefully as we can. And I'm encouraged by our work with the employee group presidents to continue to dialogue with us, ask us tough questions, and help us sort out good solutions.
I, I agree. I'd just like to add one other thought, just that the closer we get and the more information that gets out there about our plan, the more feedback and concerns we get. And that's good because as people have information, they're digesting it and problem solving with us. And that's not gonna stop ever. Because we, we're racing now to get to day one. And by day two, we'll have another 129 questions. Because as we actually try to do this is then when we really, really need their, their problem solving and they're working with us to, to, to address things that happen that nobody anticipated. So, so this is just gonna be ongoing as long as we're, as long as we're doing this. And, and we need their partnership and we've been, I've just been so pleased with the, just their honesty and forthrightness and our ability to work together.
All right, I saw hands up from Kristen and Nate. Go ahead, Kristen.
So, yeah, and, and I agree, Todd, Scott, Sandra, absolutely. The, and I think that once teachers can be in their rooms and classrooms and see what's going on in their buildings, it will, it will definitely help. It'll bring up another 200 questions. But that is a good thing because that is the problem solving and that is the, the good thought processes that we need. I can tell you that as someone who works in the public, you know, when we talked about reopening the library, there were most of us in there who were petrified about opening up to the library. We work with, you know, every walk of life imaginable. And we love it and we missed it and we were a little afraid to go back to it. Weren't quite sure what to expect. And so we, you know, prepared and prepared and prepared. And it wasn't until we were able to get into the building and do the walkthrough of what is this gonna look like? How are we gonna, you know, prepare ourselves when these 10 things that have never happened before are happening to us? Then, then we started to feel a little more comfortable. And each day that passed, we were feeling a little bit more comfortable. And then when we finally opened the doors, you know, it actually, it went very smoothly. It went much better than expected. And yes, you know, five or 10 things that we weren't expecting happened. And we had to readjust and, you know, it's like Naomi had said, this is a very, it, it requires us to be flexible and it requires us to be constantly thinking of new ways to do things. And I think our staff, you know, from top to bottom can do that and can do that well. And as long as we encourage that and continue to encourage that, when we hear, you know, people saying, oh, well, what about this, this, and this? We, we don't shut them down and say, no, don't worry about it. We've got it taken care of. Say, oh, yeah, these are legitimate concerns that we need to address. We have addressed these two and this one we haven't, so let's talk about it. So I think as long as we're doing that, that we're gonna be good. So, just, and I guess to more wrap up for myself, I just wanna say thank you to everybody. Everybody who's been sending emails, all the teachers, all the staff members. The work of the administration has been phenomenal, talking, I mean, you've got, talk about herding cats, right? That's what y'all have been doing is herding cats. And I think that graduations actually show us that we can do this and we can do this well. When I saw, you know, when we, that we were doing graduations live, I was, I had some trepidations. I was nervous about that. And my thought was, why are we doing this when we, we don't need to? We can do it remotely or we don't have to do this live. And then the first processional we walked down, I actually had a little misty-eyed and I thought, you know, there's a reason we do this. This is the kids, that students need this, the adults need this, the young adults who are graduating need this. Everybody needed that, that step forward. And it went off so well. And it gave me faith that, that, that September, sorry, the August to go well is, as, as well. So I just wanna say thank you for everyone's hard work. And I know, you know, you got the first 90% done and the second 90% is coming. So, but, you know, just thank you.
Nate, I think you had some other questions as well?
Sure, I'd, I'd say ditto to Kristen's comments. Thanks to everyone for everything. And there may be people that are flexible, but we're dealing with a lot of employees that have the range of approaches to how they're dealing with this. And some can deal with ambiguity better than others. And so I would hope that all the supervisors out there and the ships at sea are cognizant that they, to the extent they can, be in communication with their staffs so that, you know, as Kristen said before, we cannot over-communicate in this instance. And it will really help staffs to be able to have at least a good number of these questions answered prior to the time that they get in their buildings and prior to the time school starts. So I appreciate all the thoughts and questions and concerns. And we're just gonna have to extend to everyone a measure of grace to help each other get through this. And I appreciate everyone trying to pull together to educate our community's children. So we'll just keep working on it. And I appreciate the patience of the students, families, and community that we're trying to do our best. And we may not hit the mark every time, but we're gonna try to do as good a job as we can.
Going around the circle, DJ, did you wanna, yeah, go ahead. DJ.
Well, I just wanna, uh, I, I would, I would ditto Kristen's comments a lot also. The thing about the graduations, which my daughter was so happy that we were able to pull off and do in person. We still gotta wait two weeks here to really find out how bad of a situation maybe that, that did cause. And, and that, again, could be another one of those times that we might have to veer and change our plan a little bit. As we've all been talking about, the flexibility of, of changing and making sure that we are having a safe environment for our, our staff and for our students. It's, it is definitely the top of our minds and we wanna do the best that we can. And I, I've seen that through everyone I've talked to in the district and I appreciate that. I did have another question that floated up for, kind of for Todd and maybe for technology. But the, the new Chromebooks and stuff that we were ordering for the younger kids, it sounds like they're not gonna be here for a while. How does that affect our, our, our first two weeks of trying to get those kids up and learning? If we ended up having to go on a, a longer online version?
Yeah, it's a challenge. We did order Chromebooks for all kindergarten through second grade students. Those will be in hopefully late September. We purposely, as I said earlier, did not set us up in phase three for those first two weeks. We're simply calling it a staggered start. We don't wanna cloud that. We also know that not all of our elementary students are gonna be one-to-one. We know our third through fifth graders are. I think what we'll do right now, our, our best hope, DJ, is that the schedule goes, goes right and, and lanes our way and, and we have some good luck with this. We'll, we'll spend the, the first couple of weeks in kindergarten and second grade without those machines. They just have one cart per class. We're gonna have some protocols for them to practice what it's like to get on there. With little kids, there's gonna be a lot of orientation as well as with families. But no, we do not have those machines available. We've never had them available. And, and I really wanna commend Dan Stark and Dustin and, and the team for placing that order this summer. But again, we got in just ahead of the curve to get those in and we're gonna have to wait and be patient. If we go to an all-virtual environment, let's say that conditions worsen and we're forced to get out of the buildings, that's gonna be a challenge for us in the short run, no doubt. I, I would openly acknowledge that. We don't have a machine for every student at this point. But when we do, our best hope is that when those machines come, we'll still be in an environment where our teachers are making at least limited contact with students. We'll be in a phase three, I hope, or, or even something better. Maybe we'll all be in before we have to face the idea that there's closures. And during that time, we wanna take advantage of that. We will start right away working with them on logins. Their teacher learning pages are gonna be important. And I know that's gonna be a challenge for our kindergarten through second grade teachers, no doubt. They do not have those machines at their disposal right away. And, and again, we're, we're watching the timing. If worse comes to worse, we know how to distribute machines. Let's hope it doesn't come to that. Let's hope we're able to do that in a calm environment while they're in the classroom, test out our MiFi devices. If not, we'll put our, our creative flow together and we'll come up with, we'll come up with a solution.
Okay, I just wanna clarify. You said that there, there are carts available in, in the classrooms that they'll at least be able to get some training on before the machines come?
Yeah, I, I, the, the teachers won't need those carts for their own training. They all have machines. As far as the kids go, yeah, what we have right now, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade all have one computer assigned to them. So there's one cart per class. And each class will have enough computers on that for each student. At the kindergarten through second grade level, we just have a cart at a grade level. And depending on the number of folks at your grade level, sections at your grade level, that can be challenging to share those. And, and I know that what we'll want to do right away with the younger kids is get them comfortable on that. So I would imagine in those first two to three weeks, we will get machines in front of kids. They may not be the exact ones they use right away, but what we really want them to do is a couple of things. The information we collected in the spring regarding home connectivity is obsolete. We have families that are in different situations than they were five or six months ago. We also don't believe everybody interpreted what it means to be connected accurately. So one of the things we gotta do right away at elementary is find that out. We also have to get kids on the machines, have them log in, have them get to their learning page. We need to get, make sure they have connectivity at home. We'll spend a good deal of time in this first couple of weeks doing that. That's an extra burden on our kindergarten through second grade teachers because that's a time where they're assessing, getting to build relationships. But we're gonna go at that. But yeah, right now, you have one cart per grade level as opposed to one cart per room like you do third.
Carolyn, do you wanna chime in with any comments or questions? I wanna, I haven't heard much from you. You've been so quiet.
No, I think that, yeah, well, I think there's been a lot of questions asked already. And I think that, that, that has addressed any question I might have had. So I think, yeah, like, there's been enough questioning and that's helped answer any questions I might have.
Okay, great. Naomi, go ahead.
Is the delay in the receiving of those Chromebooks going to affect our PSD virtual families in any way?
No, because remember, all third through fifth grade, we had a meeting this afternoon. Robert Beauchamp was heading up that group with Cheryl Finnellson and Brad Avery at PGA. They have a plan to get machines in kids' hands. We probably will work with our third through fifth graders, Naomi, those that want to opt for PSD virtual. We'll get a way to the machine that they have at their school in their hand. For the kindergarten through second graders, and we do have kindergarten through second graders signing up for PSD virtual. There's a pretty even distribution across grade levels. But we're starting to approach about a hun, you know, not quite 100 kids per grade level yet, but we're getting there. In some cases, we've gone over that. We will find machines for them from the get-go. It would be almost impossible for them to access PSD virtual without the machine to be virtual. So we'll work on that for sure. They'll be a priority without a doubt. And we know through the system, I know that Dan and Dustin and team will find a way to make sure that they're a priority and have those machines. And then we'll wait patiently for the others. The order is not delayed necessarily by any means. It just takes a while to get, you know, 6,000 computers in. And it takes a while. And you also have a lot of districts that once CARE Act money came out across the country, they were lining up to get those machines. So I wanna commend our IT group for jumping ahead of them by a week or so and getting our order in. Does that mean it won't be delayed? I, I, I don't think, I mean, I hope it's not. Right now, we have every reason to believe our machines will be here no later than October 1. If that changes, we'll keep you apprised of that and, and we'll figure out a way to, to deal with it. But as far as the PSD virtual kids, they'll have machines in their hands and ready to roll.
Any other final comments or questions? Rob, go right ahead.
All right, so I, just as an aside before I make my sort of final comment here, we've had folks communicate, not only in our public comment today, but also in emails, you know, how can we ask people to go into the schools when we're meeting virtually? We haven't worked out all the details yet, but our intent is that if we're asking teachers and students to be in the schools, that we're gonna find a way to meet in person as well. And we don't know what that looks like yet. And like I said, we don't have all the details, but we understand that we need to be walking, walking the talk, if that's the right metaphor. So having said that, I wanna thank the staff for all the work that you all have put in and the folks who report to you have put into these opening plans and educational strategies. I know you're trying to strike a balance between health concerns and the desire that we all have to get kids in the schools. I know it's hard. It's a lot of work. Folks have not had the summer breaks and vacations and relaxing that they normally have in order to be discharged for the school year. And yet you have to start running 100 miles an hour as the school opens as well. So thank you so much for that, for that extra effort and for the time that you put into that. I had written some, a fairly strong statement going into a lot of the science behind why this is a risk situation. But frankly, I was inspired by the comments that some of my peers made, Naomi, Kristen, Nate, DJ, in particular, in terms of some of the things that you all said, summing things up. So I think that, I'll just say this. We understand, all of us understand, that kids learn better in school and that there are other mental and physical health reasons why it's better for them to be in school. We all know that, okay? Please don't doubt our, our, our commitment and our understanding of that principle. However, there is a health crisis that affects kids at least to some degree and the adults in our schools even more. It's simply not true to say that it doesn't affect kids. You know, we're talking about science. Science is clear that it does affect some kids, right? And varying degrees. Also, what we do affects not only our students, but also, and employees and parents, but also potentially the community at large. but also potentially the community at large. If the schools become hotbed of coronavirus spreading, it's not only going to affect our ability to have schools open, it's going to affect our ability to have businesses open, to have restaurants open, to have anything going on in our, our county other than a lockdown that we, that none of us particularly liked back in, you know, March, April, May, whatever. So our decision has far-reaching consequences. We are working with the County Health Department and paying attention to science, which I have to emphasize again, is absolutely not unambiguous about kids being affected, right? Kids are affected. There are differing studies saying how much they're affected, how much they're spreaders, which ages are spreaders, all of that stuff. I get that. You know, and we can sign our favorite things, but it's not unambiguous that we should just open schools and kids would be safe. We're trying to strike the right balance here between the values and the needs of the community and our teachers and our students and our parents, and we have to be flexible as new information comes in. Bottom line, actions have consequences, right? If the trends continue, I at least am virtually certain that we will need to go to totally online schooling at some point in the near future, whether that's at the start of school or soon thereafter. On the other hand, if the community, including our students, take the appropriate precautions at school and away from school, we have a much better chance of having at least some in-person schooling and/or keeping school buildings open. So I, I can't emphasize enough that it's in all of our hands to make the right decisions to help us to get where we all want to go, which is to have kids in schools, to have the best learning possible.
Great. Thanks, Rob. Yeah, and there's a lot of ditto to that. So I think what I'm going to say for myself as we kind of close this subject out first is, yes, thank you. If only everyone could understand the amount of work that had to go on from so many people in the administration to get to where we are today and the number of people who are essentially not getting vacations or even are working overtime to get to this point. So to me, I, what I heard tonight sounded good. The slow start that you guys, this team has come up with feels like a really good way to build confidence into the system. And I think that's going to be very important. I want to be clear for those people out there listening, how this board is approaching things. We are going to vote on a calendar change, but nominally, there's no voting from the board. We're just supporting and monitoring our professional staff. And as you hear, I think most of the board just really feels like we have top-flight professionalism. If ever at some point, particularly board leadership felt like there was a strong divergence in one way or the other, we could come together and seek out some type of vote. But we're not doing that right now. We're listening. We're prodding. We're asking. And I'm hearing a lot of really great things. I hope that we have this to do for six months more. I think there's every reason to believe things will start calming down in six months. I feel like our Pooter School District is a community treasure. It's something we all have to remember. We're in an environment where there's been a lot of contention and a lot of tension. But we're inside of our little Pooter School District community, and all I can ask is that we all work together. This staff has put together a plan. They have shown flexibility, the ability to be nimble, to listen to people. We're all reading emails. We're all listening to you. Today, I think what we want to do is start acting on the plan, acknowledging our fears, acknowledging the different perspectives, the different circumstances and needs of everybody involved, trust one another, start working together, look towards this plan and build into it. And if we do that, and we trust the system and the folks doing the work, I think we're going to get there. And I think there's been an acknowledgement. There could be some hiccups and there may need way, need to be times where we adjust, and we'll do that. So I just want to thank you, Dr. Smizer, Scott and Todd, Matt, everybody for the work you're doing this summer, for the teachers who are preparing and who have fears as they approach, for parents who deeply, deeply need to get kids back in school, knowing that it is the best thing for them, for their families, for everyone else. I think, Rob, you said that just beautifully. This is a treasure. It's part of the system that we're all working in. Let's make it work. All right. With that, I'm going to close up this subject and move us on to the last item, which I think will go a little bit faster than this. So the only action item for the evening is we have a proposed revised calendar. And I don't believe we have a presentation on this, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Smizer. Okay. So what I need from a board member is a motion for the revised calendar. And Nate, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, Kristoff, for your quotes that may make it into the newspaper. I move that the Pooter School District COVID-amended 2020 to 2021 school year calendar as posted on the Board of Education meeting agenda packet with all the details there.
Thank you very much. I believe I have a second from Naomi Johnson. Okay. Are there any questions or comments regarding the calendar, board members? Nate, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind myself and everyone that one of the big portions of that calendar change is a delay to the starting date. The new starting date will be a week later, August 24. And there may be some, so there are some details about that that I won't go into. But I just wanted to say we're delaying the start of school a week.
Are there other comments or questions of that type? Okay. Seeing none, Jill, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
DJ Anderson? Nate Donovan?
Nate Donovan votes aye.
Kristen Draper votes aye.
Kristoff Bev?
Kristoff Bev votes aye.
Naomi Johnson?
Johnson votes aye.
Rob Pedersen? Carolyn Reed?
Carolyn Reed, aye.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Very good. So that brings us to the end of the meeting. And just so everybody is aware, we have our next meeting, which will be our first official business meeting of the school year on August 11. As of the moment, it is going to be virtual unless something were to change. And we're leaning towards coming back together in person on the 24th. So stay informed and we'll look for that. So I will call this, I will adjourn this meeting at 5:42 PM. Thank you very much.